...so quickly. Diagnosis and illness can progress so quickly that you don't know what comes next. And by having professionals around you who are already experienced, they can kind of prepare you for those next steps. And that's got to be incredibly satisfying to be able to say to the family, now look, we've got this covered now, but this is what's coming.
Definitely, I totally agree. Just to help them out with whatever needs they may have, just to keep their loved ones at home. In this case was their mom. To keep her mother at home and just to see the smile on her face that we were there to help her out with the needs that she needs, she has to keep her at home. And overall, I think it's been a great experience for her to be part of our program. And it's just, we get so satisfied to see such wonderful outcomes when we are able to be there to help them out and to keep them at home in such as this case.
Right. Well, you know, Anne, where it happens in families that somebody ends up being the person that provides the in-home care. Are you able to give counseling to other family members to help them understand what the primary caregiver is going through and what their contribution maybe should be?
Sure, we provide counseling through a licensed clinician. We also provide various other types of resources. You know, it's important for all viewers to know that this is a state-funded program and it's available throughout the state of California. And it's also important to point out that we have a collaborative of vendors and agencies that help us do our job. So we have other organizations that help us manage this case. And by the way, all this is very, very confidential. Confidentiality is our number one goal here.
Well, we need to talk more about this, but it's time to take a short break. And when we come back, we will continue our discussion on how to assist vulnerable older adults to avoid having to leave their own homes. Please stay tuned. We'll be right back with more of Aging in L.A.
The biggest blessing in life is to realize your personal power.
So many of us wonder, why are we living? Well, that's why we're living, to help others.
Community work brings families closer together.
When we help each other, we all get healthier.
Doing good for others, doing positive action always comes back around and enriches your life.
It's the biggest gift you could ever give yourself.
Doing good is good for all of us.
Please join us in volunteering.
Improve your health by helping others. Visit iparticipate.org.
Before approaching an intersection, so that's why two wrong turns don't make a right turn.
Now let's learn about tailgating.
Hey, that's how I got my ticket.
You got a ticket for tailgating? That's not good. That can be really annoying.
Doesn't get you there any faster.
It leaves you no distance to break.
Which makes it easier to get into a crash.
And it also may increase your insurance premium.
And I hate tailgaters.
Tailgating causes crashes.
Back off.
Watch the road.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. Our topic today, life is better at home. Our guests are from Partners in Care Foundation. Esther M. Sefalian is supervisor, care managers, and Anne Waizouahead is vice president of direct services at the foundation. Thank you both again for joining us. This is, this is really a good discussion because the idea that you have identified best practices for keeping people in their home is so important because most people would prefer it. Can you tell me a little bit about how you can apply the best notions that you've uncovered to a real-life situation?
Definitely. It is known that aging at home is preferred more often, obviously, than being institutionized. And, you know, it could be the simplest thing, simplest modifications at the house, such as adding the handheld shower hose to a system, taking showers easily, or a grab bar, or carpet tape to secure the rugs down so they don't fall. The simplest things could help these clients and individuals, our elders, seniors, stay at home and be comfortable and safe at home. And that's the goal, to keep them as comfortable and as secure and to prevent any falls. That's, that's our motto, just to help them out.
I understand. Now, Anne, you mentioned something while during the break about how fearful some seniors can be about having strangers in their home or signing a contract, oh, there's somebody's going to take my house. How do you help reassure a senior that these services are not going to end up taking them to bankruptcy court?
Exactly. These services are at no cost. They are theirs, their benefit that they've earned and are entitled to. It's a state program. We are a nonprofit agency and there is no contract to sign. You simply sign the care plan agreeing that this is the service you want us to provide. Each client has an individualized, personalized care plan. And based on the agreement with the family and the client and the care managers and of course, the supervisor, we all come up with a care plan. And once the client signs, we're able to provide them this needed service.
Now, what about follow-up? I mean, elderly people's needs do change. Is that part of what you do by managing or supervising rather, the case managers?
Well, all the care managers actually make multi-contacts to their clients. And every three months, they go out to visit the client. And every six months, we have the alternate discipline, which meant like if the primary care manager is a social worker, the nurse will go out to see the client and assess what they believe might have been changes and how to assist the client even further. And every year, we have a reassessment, is when we go out there and assess the entire atmosphere, safety, ambulatory equipment usage, medications, emergency response services, just assess the whole situation, the health conditions, diagnosis of the client. If they have changed severely, how we could assist to keep them further from being institutionalized.
Right. You know, I noticed in the, in the piece that we saw with Ms. Angeline, that she actually had a hoist to help move her mother around. Now, how would you even know that such a thing exists?
Well, that's why, that's why we're here for it. You know, we work really, really close with their primary doctors and their physicians in order to come up and fulfill their care plan needs. Our nurses and our social workers are very well-trained to be able to identify any medical needs, any safety needs, or anything that they need basically to make sure that they're independent and living at home with dignity. And that includes working with their primary physician and getting the prescriptions needed to install these safety devices or hoisters in their house.
Well, a lot of people aren't aware that you actually do need a prescription to get things like a wheelchair or whatever, but that, the hoist, I was just thinking of the many times that I, you know, it's physical. You pick this person up to move them into the shower because you don't...
We do help with that. We do help with all the process, even to get a prescription from the doctor. Our care managers will contact a doctor and say, you know, we realize that so-and-so needs a hoiler lift or to assist them, or needs a cane, or whatever the needs might be. And our care managers do make contacts with the doctor's offices to get a prescription. And we do have vendors who we use, who we send the prescription out to, and immediately they know the process and how a company works, will send out the needed items to the client.
Right. It's, I know, I have seen too often where the husband ends up trying to take care of his wife and is not very good at it.
Right.
And needs a lot of counseling to come to understand, this is not a failing, this is, you are not failing your wife in your marital vows. This is a hard job for anyone.
It absolutely is. And we provide counseling and education on how to be a proper caregiver. And, you know, we work closely with the city of Los Angeles and their family caregiver outreach support groups and ask the expert events through our family care partnership program, also at Partners in Care, that would help all caregivers be educated and provide them the knowledge and support that they need.
Right. Now, it's very important. If this has piqued your interest, we're going to again put the telephone numbers up for you to be able to call Partners in Care Foundation so you'll have a point of contact. This is, it's a challenge. And we read them off again for you. Area code 818-837-3775, or 213-738-8320. And the website is www.pif.org. Of course, you can call the Department of Aging and we'll get you this contact information. So Esther, do you think that the population of growing numbers of seniors is going to get used to calling on you and other providers? Do you think it's going to be part of their, of their new reality?
Oh, I think so, especially with the baby boomers retiring. They're used to, more than are used to living at home and living, living independently, I should say, than living at home. And they are going to get used to being on their own more than the current generation. And they are going to rely on little programs like ours to assist them with whatever needs they have.
Anne, that's interesting. Are you, is there an educational outreach for the people who are potential clients? Is there, are you actively telling people, look, we exist and you're going to need us one day?
At Partners in Care Foundation, we have various in-services that we do through the city of Los Angeles community to make sure that they're aware of the services that we provide, whether it be caregiver services, multipurpose senior service programs, adult day programs.
I wish, I wish we had more time, but that's all the time we have for today's edition of Aging in L.A. I want to give special thanks to our guests from Partners in Care Foundation, Esther M. Sefalian and Anne Waizouahead. Thanks to both of you for joining us today. Thank you. Now, it's time for today's Senior Stat Shot. Did you know that more than 10 million older adults require assistance with daily living activities such as eating, dressing, and personal care? One-third of older adult Americans rely on Social Security as their main source of income. Simple home modifications such as adding grab bars and handrails could help many seniors avoid moving from their home. Ninety-six percent of seniors wish to remain independent in their own homes instead of moving in with family members. Increased provision of in-home services to assist independence in the home is causing an increased vacancy rate of up to 30% at some assisted living and nursing home facilities. Fifteen percent of late mortgage payments in the older adult population are due to increased medical costs. And services to assist older adults to remain at home include home health care, homemaking services, nutrition programs, home safety and repair services, which are available through the Department of Aging. Call 1-800-510-2020 for details. That's 1-800-510-2020 for details. And that's today's Senior Stat Shot. The Department of Aging produces this program with City View, Channel 35, so that seniors living in Los Angeles and surrounding communities are well-informed on the many issues that face them in everyday life. And also to let you know of the many services that the Department of Aging offers our senior citizens. Now, we'd like to hear from you with comments on the program, what you like, what you think can be improved, and here your ideas for future programs. So please give us a call. Number's right there on your screen, area code 213-252-4088. That's 213-252-4088. Call us with your comments and ideas. We look forward to hearing from you. I'm Paul Peterson for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View, Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thank you so much for watching. We'll see you the next time.
Some things are predictable. And some things, you just don't know unless you have ESP, an emergency survival program that prepares you for emergencies or just the plain old unexpected. You can't predict, but you can prepare.
Hi, I'm Kristy Oldham in Los Feliz. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. Would you like a mustache for that?
This is the first one called for.
Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Laban.
Thank you, Mr. Laban.
And members, we are six people. We've got 70, Cracorian, and nine are in E R C. We are waiting to arrive with Partners. Corian, Mr. Alakhan, and Mr. Parks and Mr. Smith are excused. And this is Mr. Laban. We're at seven members now. We need 10 to begin the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, and Mr. Weeza, Mr. Laban, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Weston, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl is here now. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. We are at eight members. It's waiting to be arrival of Mr. Corian, or Mr. Cracorian, Mr. Zine, and Mr. Dey are in E R C. Mr. Alakhan, Mr. Laban, Mr. Parks, and Mr. Smith are excused. All right, we are at eight members. We need two more members. Thank you very much, Mr. Garsetti. We are at nine members now. All right, we can go live now. We're at 11 members. We can begin the meeting.
Okay, great. Welcome to Los Angeles City Hall. This is the Los Angeles City Council chambers, and this is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Today is March 1st, 2011. The council meets three times per week on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. All meetings are open to the public. And for those of you who cannot make it to City Hall, meetings are televised via cable on Channel 35 and can be viewed by visiting our website. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the meeting to order?
Alakhan, Cardenas, Han, Weeza, Cracorian, Laban, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weston, Zine, Garsetti, 11 members present and a quorum. Madam President.
All right. Mr. Clerk, what's the first item of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weeza moves. Mr. Rosendahl seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Zine moves. Mr. Reyes seconds.
Madam President, this is Tuesday, and it would be time for the flag salute.
All right. If Mr. Zine, who's already up and ready to go, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next order of business, please. If we can run through the agenda.
First item on the agenda, item one is an ordinance, notice for public hearing.
All right.
Council should have 12 members. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold that on the desk until we have 12 members. Next items, please.
Items two through 10 are items for which public hearings have been held. On item four, there is a request to continue that matter one day to February, to March 2nd.
Is there any objection to continuing item number four until the, sorry, March 7th, you said?
Actually tomorrow, March 2nd.
March 2nd. Any objection? Okay. Not on number four? Okay. That will be continued. Other specials, Mr. Reyes? Eight, nine, and 10, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Weeza? Okay. Mr. Cracorian? Any other specials from two through 10? Two through 10? Okay. Let's hold two on the desk as well till we have 12 members. Again, we're still awaiting Mr. Cracorian, and I think he's the only one outstanding. When we have him, we'll have 12 members. Let's hold two on the desk until then. Please take up the balance, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 11 through 18 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. There is a request on items 11 and 12 to continue those matters also for one day to March 2nd.
All right. Is there any objection to continue? Well, first, is there any objection to consideration of these? Seeing none, those are before us. 11 and 12, if there's no objection to continue, they will, will be continued until tomorrow. Specials, Ms. Han?
14.
14 for Ms. Han. And you have a request to take that out of order, correct up first, I believe? All right. Mr. Reyes?
Just want to make clear, we have eight, nine, and 10 together.
Eight, nine, yeah, they're going to be taken up as one, Mr. Reyes. No problem. Are there specials? Okay. We'll hold, we have a request, I think, to hold 15 on the table as well? Was there a request to continue that, Mr. Clerk?
There's, there are cards on that matter right now.
Okay, we'll hold that on the desk.
And you also have cards on items 16 and 18.
Okay. We'll call a special, and I will also call 16 special. That leaves us with 13 and 17 colleagues. Anybody wishing to call 13 or 17 special? No, we'll close the...
Madam President, you now have a card on 17.
Okay. 13, if nobody wishes to call special, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
On the supplemental agenda, item 19 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Objection? We'll take that up as well, number 19. Any colleagues wishing to call that special? Do we have cards on that, Mr. Clerk?
No cards.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Nobody wishes to call 19 special? We'll go ahead and prepare the roll on 19 and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay. That is approved. We will come back to the ordinances when we have our 12th member here. Mr. Cracorian will please make his way chambers as soon as possible. Before we take up the general public comment, there's been a request to take 14 first. And we do have a number of public speaker cards, and I know a lot of people are here on item number 14, so out of respect to as many members of the public as possible, we will take public comments on this. For those who have not come to Los Angeles City Council meeting before, we have a podium up here for you. Also, some people will be testifying remotely from Van Nuys City Hall as well. It's two minutes per speaker, and we invite forward first Rusty Hicks as our first speaker. He'll be followed by Augustine Savada. There's Rusty Hicks here. I know it's a crowded room, so folks are going to make their way around. Good morning.
Good morning. Members of the council, my name is Rusty Hicks. I'm the political director for the L.A. County...
I'm the political director for the L.A. County Federation of Labor, and I'm here to deliver a statement on behalf of, uh, Maria Elena DeRazo, the Federation Executive Secretary Treasurer. You had before your resolution to, uh, consider the annexation and, um, initiate, uh, to support AB forty-six, which is, uh, being moved by Speaker Perez. To be clear, uh, there may in fact be and potentially are governance issues in the city of Vernon, um, and those issues must, uh, be addressed in a, in a timely fashion. However, this bill goes far beyond the issues of governance and specifically fails to address the issues of over fifty thousand working men and women in the city of Vernon. In our, in our view, consideration of this resolution is, uh, is premature. Um, we understand that language, uh, considering, uh, the removal, there'll be removal of the annexation language, um, and if, uh, if the, if that is removed, the, uh, argument to support this resolution is in fact, uh, hollow. Its removal means there's absolutely no reason to support or consider this resolution, uh, because the outcome of AB forty-six in no way will affect the city of L.A. So why exactly would this body take a position? And the last issue is that AB forty-six, to this point, while there have been ongoing conversations with the author, fails to address the issues of the working men and women, uh, in Vernon. The bill's current language endangers the city's, uh, power generation, a first-rate public safety, um, safety net, as well as thousands of good jobs in key, uh, key industry. Uh, we've received plenty of verbal assurances, but these issues are incredibly important. We need to see text to address the issues of the working men and women in Vernon, so we ask that you either vote no or table this issue to a later date.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Uh, Augustine Sabada is next. After that will be, uh, Peter Corselli.
Mr. Garsetti, President, and, uh, members of the council. I come here, uh, after having studied this issue in great depth for many years and seeing how the impact of Vernon on the surrounding cities, including Los Angeles, Maywood, Bell, Huntington Park, the impact it has environmentally in question, also to of the economic base of those cities. Many of the people he mentions, the gentleman from the AFL-CIO mentions, live in these surrounding cities. Besides working there in that, in that so-called city, this, this, this thing about it being a city is a joke. Ninety people does not make a city. And you have a lot of corruption there. You have attorneys making a million and a half dollars. And, you know, people are, you know, crazed over the fact that Bell, the city manager, was making eight hundred thousand dollars, and this goes on. The cheapest guy that you have on the city council there at, in, uh, Vernon is about eight or nine hundred thousand dollars, and one of them has already been prosecuted, and it is just corruption. If this thing, this situation, this is a cancer on Los Angeles. Vernon is a cancer, and it needs to be excised, and I believe the bill by Mr. Speaker of the Assembly, Mr. John Pettis, is what is needed at this time. We need to clean up our act here in the state of California, and specifically in the greater Los Angeles area, and we need to have support by everybody for this. The more air, the more vision that's put on this, uh, city shows that the people there are just running, it's kinda like a Ponzi scheme. You have ninety people who work for the city and are controlled. Uh, those are the, are the citizens of Vernon. It's a joke. It's, but it's a bad joke. As we say in Spanish, es una burla.
Thank you. Peter Corselli? After that will be Ed Rendon. Good morning.
Good morning. Well, that was well informed. Um, I didn't really plan on speaking this morning, but I was asked to. Uh, I work for a company with a hundred and sixty-five employees in the city of Vernon. We are a refrigerated warehouse. My, my main thing that I would ask is why? Why would you even consider, uh, supporting AB forty-six? We've got lots of people here, lots of businesses, who've said, "If the city of Vernon goes away, so do we." These jobs will go away, these people will be hurt. With thirteen percent unemployment in the county of Los Angeles, why would you even for a second consider doing anything that would upset an apple cart? An apple cart that makes money, an apple cart that supports all of the surrounding communities? As he said, those people that even live in Maywood. The reason they live in Maywood is because they work in Vernon. Vernon was an... Vernon's an industrial city. It was designed as an industrial city, and that's how it's always been. The, the ninety residents are there, they're taken care of, but the real constituents of the city of Vernon are the businesses, the employees. I've worked with the city of Vernon for many years. Their, their number one priority is putting people to work. That's all I have to say, because Vernon works.
Thank you. Ed Rendon is our next speaker. After that is Stan Stossel. Good morning.
Good morning. President Garsetti, council members, uh, glad to be here before you with a broad coalition. I represent Teamsters Joint Council Forty-two, political director. And, um, in thinking about this issue, let's not forget, there's thirteen percent unemployment in L.A. County. It's about jobs. This issue is about jobs for us, nothing more, nothing less, in terms of Teamsters. I'm with this coalition of small business, major corporations, uh, people that create jobs, maintain jobs, potential jobs in this city. That's what we're here for. As Brother Hicks mentioned, there's governing issues which will be sorted out, but all we want is this coalition to have our time to work out these labor issues. And if this body could help in that process, we'd appreciate it. Again, it's about jobs, that's why I'm here, and that's one of my organizations here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Stan Stossel? After that will be Father Tom Schweitzer. Good morning.
Good morning, Honorable Counsel. My member, my name is Stan Stossel, Assistant Business Manager, IBW forty-seven. I represent the utility workers of the city of Vernon, and if they would, some of them are here today, please stand up. Uh, but today I'm standing with all of the workers, union and non-union, who work in Vernon. Flat out, AB forty-six is wrong. For some reason, the Speaker has a vendetta against the working men and women of Vernon. Speaker Perez says this is about corruption. Well, I gotta tell you, corruption will always have a job, whether it's in Vernon, Los Angeles, or the halls of Sacramento, but these working men and women won't have jobs if AB forty-six passes. Every week I read about a new scandal at some California city. Why are we focusing on Vernon alone? Uh, is there some political reason? Is there a further agenda down the road? I gotta tell you what, the argument about environmental impact on the cities around Vernon, I got, Los Angeles is the eight-hundred-pound gorilla. Los Angeles creates more pollution, more smog, more waste, more toxics than all the communities around. How many cities are affected by what happens in the city of Los Angeles? I live out in Riverside. I know I get some smog out in Riverside that works its way out here from Los Angeles. So let's not deal with the, uh, environmental issues. This is a naked power grab. If the state can, if the state can do this to Vernon, they can do it to any city in the state, including Los Angeles. The city of Los Angeles should stand with all the cities and protect the rights of all cities. Many of the five thousand workers in Vernon live in Los Angeles. Their families shop and go to schools in Los Angeles. If you support this bill, you're putting your residents, your constituents, out of work. Will you replace their jobs? Will you replace their healthcare? Will you go home and tell their children why they lost their job because of votes that we're taking here today? Do the right thing, reject AB forty-six, fight corruption, not the working men and women in the city of Vernon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Father Tom Schweitzer? After, after Father Tom will be Eric Gustafson. Good morning. After you, sir, Father. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Father Tom Schweitzer. I'm pastor of Holy Angels Church of the Deaf. It's the only deaf church in Los Angeles. There's three hundred hearing parishes, only one for the deaf. We're the smallest, and we're the poorest. And we've had a great time, a great support in Vernon. We got a police department, a fire department, that's there for us, watches out for us, cares for us. They're there when I need them. I got a city hall that I can walk over and say, "I need more light at night because the deaf people are vulnerable at dark." Next week, the light goes up. So I'm just trying to say is that we don't have much. Jesus once said, "Those who have will get more, and those who have not will lose what little they have." I'm afraid that if you take this away, you may be getting more, but we're gonna lose what little we have. We're gonna lose the jobs that I was able to get for deaf people. We're gonna lose that contact with the police and fire department that have been very supportive for us. It just seems like that we have, if we have to pay more in taxes for our, I know more in taxes, but more for electric and stuff, I'm not sure our church can make it, even with a subsidy from the diocese. It's really hard. So, and like I said, for you to get more, I'm not sure what you're getting out of it, but you're not doing us any favors. All we're gonna do is get more, and like I said, but don't take for what little we have.
Thank you, Father. Uh, Eric Gustafson? After Mr. Gustafson will be Juliet Goff.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Eric Gustafson. I represent four generations of our family to work in Vernon and provide jobs in Vernon for your constituents in Los Angeles, Maywood, Southgate, throughout the entire Los Angeles basin. Uh, I'm very privileged to be here to tell you about Vernon and its pro-business support, and this bill, AB forty-six, will kill jobs. It will force companies like ourselves to look at other alternatives, alternatives we don't want to have to examine to continue our survival. We've been in Vernon for eighty-nine years, and we look forward to being there for our hundredth anniversary. I don't want to have to move the company. Our employees don't want to move, many of them which are here today. Thank you for being here. We strongly urge you to reconsider supporting this bill, and Speaker Perez, we strongly ask you to reconsider to work with the city of Vernon, to work with its true constituents, the businesses, and the fifty thousand-plus employees in Vernon, and over a hundred thousand people in the surrounding area. Thank you very much for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you. Juliet Goff is our next speaker. She'll be followed by Bill Hughes. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Juliet Goff, and I'm here representing myself and nineteen other families that are employed by my business in Vernon, Cal Plastics. I have fifteen percent of my workforce here today, which, including myself, means I have three folks here. I felt it was important enough to take them off the job right now, where we're in the middle of trying to recover from one of the worst economies we've all seen, to make our point clear that there may have been problems in the way Vernon has operated in the past. I don't doubt that, but this is not the solution. I, I would ask the Speaker to come and talk to the real constituents, the real collateral damage of your bill, sir, are businesses like mine and families like mine, who, I don't have a big company behind me. There are other businesses that are here today that have big parent companies, that they will relocate their businesses. I don't have a parent company behind me. A business like mine will probably just disappear. The, the advantages we have to work in, in a city like Vernon, the way they treat us, the way they help us to do things right, the economic advantage, has allowed me to provide affordable health insurance for my employees, even though it wasn't required until recently. And I'm really proud that I provide that for all my employees, including the dependents of all my salaried employees. I wouldn't have been able to do that if it wasn't for the economic advantage I have of being able to operate my business in Vernon. Vernon is the economic engine of this region. Shutting it down is gonna hurt the whole region. There are ways to fix this without destroying the city. It is an odd place, I agree, but it was designed to be an industrial environment, and it is strange, but we can fix it, and the business community is very motivated and very interested to help make that happen. And I hope that everyone takes a serious look at this and realizes the solution is not to destroy it, but to fix it. And we're here, and we're ready to listen and to help. Come meet us, come see us, come see what we do, and you'll learn that this bill is not the right thing to do. We should be solving our state budget, not destroying Vernon. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bill Hughes. After, after Mr. Hughes, Marisa Ogilvy will be next.
Good morning. My name is Bill Hughes. I'm the CEO of King Meat Company located in Vernon. We've been in business sixty years in Vernon. I have worked in Vernon for sixty-three. We employ two hundred and eighty-six people, of which two hundred and thirty-six are members of local Teamsters Five Seventy-two. We're located in Vernon because our type of business was not wanted in any other area. The motto of Vernon is strictly industrial. As such, most undesirable businesses are located there. There were twenty-six slaughterhouses when I started in Vernon, twenty-plus rendering plants, the Los Angeles Union Stockyards, which had ten to twenty thousand animals in it on a Monday morning. Naturally, that necessitated having a couple of fertilizer companies. It was not a pleasant smell. Nobody wanted to live there. That's why we have such a few residents. But consequently, Vernon provides us with low-cost energy to provide refrigeration to our company, as we are a federally inspected meat company. Also, we have a Class One fire department. Without it, our fire insurance goes up seventeen percent. We also are not subjected to the city of Los Angeles wholesale tax. We do over a hundred million dollars worth of business a year. One percent is a substantial amount. Our power bill would cost us another quarter of a million dollars. I have responsibility to two hundred and eighty-six families. I've worked all my life. I'm proud of the people I work with. I'm proud of what we've accomplished, and it can only be done in the city of Vernon. I don't know what the Speaker's agenda is, but it seems like it's an oxymoron for him to have a co-host a job fair on the weekend and in turn be here today to destroy jobs. You don't throw... You don't throw the baby out with the dirty bathwater.
Thank you. Uh, Marisa Ogilvy will be followed by, she'll be followed by Richard Martinez.
Good morning. My name is Marisa Ogilvy, and I'm with the Vernon Chamber of Commerce, and we represent fifty thousand employees of approximately fifteen, fifteen thousand to twenty thousand, um, uh, live in, live in the city of L.A. and vote in the city of L.A. Today, present in your council chambers are three hundred Vernon workers, unions, and businesses who are here united before you to ask that you stay your vote on AB forty-six. We also appreciate the concern, um, that everybody has, the city of Vernon, um, the city of L.A. has. The Vernon Chamber is an independent organization, a separate from the city, and we've had our, our challenges with, um, we've been at the forefront of the reforms that are taking place in the city of Vernon, and we believe that, um, governance, better reforms and practices should be put in place rather than erasing the city of Vernon. Um, to that end, we, we oppose AB forty-six. We also oppose involuntary annexation from any city based on AB six, forty-six should it pass. Um, it would have a devastating impact to thousands of jobs and people, most of who live around within the surrounding community. Um, and I just would like to say, this is a formal request to, to, to the Speaker, that we would love to engage in conversation with him and talk to him about the reforms. We're very open, we're independent from the city. We've asked to talk with him, and we, we opened that door again. We, we are very interested, so thank you.
Thank you. Richard Martinez is next. After Mr. Martinez will be Maurice Cole. Good morning.
Good morning, Counsel. My name is Richard Martinez. I've been employed in Vernon for going on thirty-eight years now. My father was there for thirty-three years. My wife works down the street at C.R. Lawrence, fifteen years. Vernon has been a great city to all of us. Vernon isn't just a, a city. When you see Vernon, you see the name Vernon. What's behind me today, this is Vernon. All these, all these hard-working people that have gone out there every day, every day, get up in the morning, go to work. This is Vernon, not just the name. We are Vernon. Thank you.
Thank you, Maurice Cole.
Uh, good morning, uh, Counsel. Thank you for having me. Uh, I work at Baker Commodities. Uh, I am, uh, very fortunate to work in the city of Vernon. I've been there twenty-one years. I've seen numerous of families retire from this corporation, and it has supplied me with the necessary tools to raise my family, and we're here, uh, to, to, we would lose a lot of jobs within this industry. This industry here, because of the price of, uh, the raise of taxes, uh, the energy sufficiency, uh, it would, it would hurt a lot of families. I have a lot of union members... I have a lot of union members. I have a lot of people that works for the company, and we're just opposing the SB eighty, uh, forty-six rule, AB forty-six rule, so people can continue to take care of their families. That's what it's about. You know, I'm, I'm not a speaker. I'm a family man. I'm responsible for my actions. And, uh, we're just saying, taking into consideration, work with, work with the city of Vernon, uh, work with the businesses. Uh, we can, we can help each other, and that's what this, uh, this, uh, this is all about. People helping people, and we're family, so I want to say thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Those were the cards on the against side. We have a number of cards that did not fill out either for or against. We'll take those or set general comments. Those are seven cards, and then we will move to the for side. Um, we have a pile of those as well. Porfirio Lopez is next. Did you want to speak on one side or the other, Mr. Lopez? After Mr. Lopez, we'll go to... After Mr. Lopez, Donna Perman in Van Nuys will speak next. Good morning.
Buenos dias.
Buenos dias. Moment.
Tito.
Good morning.
My name is Porfirio Lopez.
My name is Porfirio Lopez. I live in Maywood. For thirty years. And we are trying to fight for, and everybody is fighting. It is an industrial city, and they continue giving, giving us a work, but they don't take in consideration that our community is sick due to the contamination that we have in the area. We are close to the city of Vernon. We are receiving all this, uh, smoke and all this, uh, bad smell, uh, that, that Many people suffer of cancer, and many people die due to cancer in the city of Children and adults suffer of asthma. Due to the contaminants that they have in the city of Vernon. All those industries, they already did what they had to do. They, they already became rich. Their pockets are full. Yeah, they should look for another place or where to place their contaminants.
Our next speaker is Donna Perman. If I can, uh, if I can ask folks the following. Uh, protocol here in council chambers is to allow applause and expressions of support. We ask folks to please respect and not to boo anybody on either side. Please show the same respect when you are speaking from folks that have opposing point of view, and we appreciate your adherence to that. Donna Perman is our next speaker. She is in Van Nuys.
Yeah, I'm in Van Nuys, and I'm for the people of Vernon, uh, not for selling Vernon, so I guess I'm not sure if that's against. It's wrong to tell a city to, to be in the city of Los Angeles and make them be in the city of Los Angeles. Our city's in big trouble. Do we want to hurt the employees in Vernon? Do you want to bring in the CRA in Vernon? Perhaps that's what your point is. Uh, why would Vernon want to be in Los Angeles? Which council member would be in Vernon? Do we have another council mall, or no, it's because it's so small? Which one of you fifteen is gonna be doing Vernon? Uh, these people do not want to be in Los Angeles. Listen to these people. Look at these people, and this is not what's wanted or needed. Politicians want to hurt the city employees' rights. This is another way to, uh, to go against the employees that are there and want to be able to, uh, control their rights. It's wrong. This is a new, this is a, I believe, a CRA project that you want to go over there and make the CRA go into Vernon and have a new CRA project. This is, uh, wrong to do this. We got, uh, all this poise, I'm glad to see so many of them out there, uh, fighting for their rights. This is great. I, um, so I, uh, you can't force yourself on them. It's wrong. That's all I have to say.
Our next speaker is also in Van Nuys, and that is Miriam Fogler. After Ms. Fogler will be Mr. Rick Nightingale, also in Van Nuys. Good morning.
Let me tell you, you can't force people to, to live under your rule if they don't want it. It's in the Constitution. Okay? People have a right to due process and to decide their, their, uh, okay, their, what they want.
Sure. Love to.
And this is illegal, what you're doing. You're illegally confiscating assets from other people, and this is gonna be called for a court. A, a, it wants to be a right for the, what about the San Fernando Valley having its right to secede from Los Angeles? You made sure that we couldn't do it, 'cause we had to have a vote along with the, Los Angeles, who the Mayor Antonio is the one that blocked this thing in the first place from the San Fernando Valley succession, and now you want to annex Vernon illegally? I think that it should have, this is a vote that the, that the people of Los Angeles should decide, and the Vernon people, not you politicians, who have your hands in the cookie jar to take, uh, hard-working men and women who make less than sixty thousand dollars, seventy thousand dollars a year, and live on a twenty thousand dollars pension every year. You want to take, you take their, take away every little dime they have for your bureaucratic managers who make more than a hundred thousand and clump them together, and then give them a whatever percentage, uh, raise, and therefore the higher people get more money, and that's why you people are in the, in the situation you're in. Rick was explaining to me. And I agree that there should be a per-hour thing. Okay? It should be like a dollar and a half, two dollars an hour, or something like that, instead of giving it to the, uh, that way everybody's getting the same amount, and nobody's getting higher amount, because they're making more at the top. You know, that's what I'm saying about Vernon too. You have no right to take it from them.
Rick Nightingale is our next speaker, also in Van Nuys.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. Uh, I, I'll tell you, Vernon's like a cash cow, same as the San Fernando Valley.
That's right.
That's the reason why they wouldn't let the succession turn around for the San Fernando Valley, pull away from City of Los Angeles, 'cause it's a cash cow. Vernon turns around and has, yes, a, a very small amount of people, but it's a very wealthy area regarding, it's 'cause it's so much of the, uh, commercial industrial. They could turn around and live very comfortably. Why would they want to be in the city of Los Angeles and turn around and take the debt and the corruption and so forth that is with the city of Los Angeles? They'd have to be crazy. They better, I, I, far as I'm concerned, they need to get a real good lawyer and fight the whole situation, because that is not the democratic way. If they don't want to join, they'd have to be crazy to join the city of Los Angeles, to turn around, because they have the upper hand. They don't need the city of Los Angeles. They got more money to turn around, but they need to govern them themselves and take the responsibility of themselves and not depend like what happened with Bell, 'cause Bell was taking care of them. Look, the problem with Bell did, so, 'cause they turned around and just let, oh, well, they'll, they'll take care of us, and they got robbed. But they were still happy for what they were getting, because there wasn't that many people in the city of Vernon. But if they take the responsibility, or even get a management company, company of some way, to teach them what to do, they could live very comfortable on their own. Because this is exactly what happened years ago with the Valley and the city of Los Angeles, and now the, the Valley can't pull away and that stuff. And it, and it'd be the best thing that the Valley could get away from the city of Los Angeles, but it, they just won't let us go. And if Vernon, don't do it. This is what's gonna, same thing from the Valley to the city of Los Angeles will happen to you. They will rob you piggyback completely. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Walsh here in council chambers. John Walsh is our next speaker here in council chambers. Mr. Walsh.
Very good, Rick.
There he is. After Mr. Walsh will be Oscar Blanco.
Ninety residents in Vernon? Why does the San Fernando...
Not to waste a second, HollywoodHighlands.org. I'm here to talk about the most corrupt city in America. All the politicians are corrupt. I'm not talking about Vernon. I'm talking about Los Angeles. V for victory, V for Vernon. Do you have any apartments there? I want to get out. And who's here, standing right here? John Perez, the Speaker of the Assembly. You know, he's Antonio Villarreal's cousin. If I was Tony, if I was Antonio Villarreal's cousin, I'd be sitting there and he'd be here. I'm telling you right now, somebody said naked power grab by the Speaker. I hate to even think of the Speaker naked.
Sir, if you could please refrain from, if you could please refrain from personal comments.
He's heckling me. He didn't heckle anybody else.
Sir, you know the code of conduct.
L.A. should not annex Vernon. Vernon should annex L.A. That way, every time, I'm gonna tell you right now, he's right, cash cow. This is a naked, naked power grab. And I'm gonna tell you right now, V for victory. Every time the Speaker of the Assembly lies, he gains one pound. Thank you.
Oscar Blanco is the next speaker. And that'll be the last warning on personal comments. You know the, the policy on that, Mr. Walsh.
Buenos dias.
After that will be, uh, Senor Rosa Gonzalez.
Buenos dias. Those presentes.
Good morning to the council members.
Mi nombre es Oscar Blanco.
Mi nombre es Oscar Blanco.
Estamos hoy día aquí para hablar sobre el problema de Vernon.
We are here today to speak about the problem that we have at Vernon.
No venimos a escuchar a estos señores que si generan empleos, que si pagan impuestos al sistema tributario, no venimos a hablar de eso.
Yeah, we are not coming to talk about the people that is speaking about if they pay taxes or if they don't pay taxes. We don't come to speak about that.
Simplemente vienen con su arrogancia como siempre, con su sistema de burguesía que tienen.
They're coming with their arrogance that they have.
Hablamos aquí del problema que están causando a la contaminación de las comunidades.
We want to speak about the problem that they are causing, the contamination in the community.
Como ellos no viven ahí, no saben el sistema, el daño que están causando a las niñez, a las, a las gentes mayores.
As they don't live there, they don't know the damage that they are causing to the children and to the senior citizens.
Ahí habían de vivir ellos.
They should live there.
Por qué no van a poner un negocio a Beverly Hill, donde viven los intereses de los brincos, para que sientan la contaminación que se siente vivir entre ellos. Ya todos, señores, gracias.
Why they don't go to open a business in Beverly Hills for them to feel the contamination? Thank you.
Gracias, señor. Uh, we are next, Rosa Gonzalez. Sister Rosa Gonzalez.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Sister Rosa Gonzalez, a Franciscan sister of Mary Maculette, a daughter of Saint Francis of Assisi, the patron saint of the environment, and a daughter of the Church, specifically the Church of Resurrection. Here I am, we have an over three thousand people in my parish community that want to show my, our solidarity for this project or proposal of Mr. John Perez. So, I believe I'm truly convinced that the Church needs and lends a voice to the voiceless, and that my presence here, my silent presence, obey to that. I want to vote, and we want all our people to support Mr. Speaker of the House, John Perez. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, we have one, we have one late against side, and then we'll have more from the for side. Uh, the remainder will be from the for side, but one last on the against is Leon Zakaria. Is Leon Zakaria here? Sorry, is Mr. Zakaria here? If he's not here, we'll go on to the next card. It'll be Father John Moretta.
Good morning. I've been the pastor of Resurrection Church for twenty-seven years in Boyle Heights, my parish immediately. Uh, I brought the city of Vernon to the, uh, to the north side. Uh, I have lived there for twenty-seven years. When I was a young man, I lived fifteen years with my family in Huntington Park, so I, on the other side of Vernon, so I really know a lot about the city of Vernon. And, uh, I'd just like to share one anecdote. Uh, some twenty years ago, the city of Vernon tried to build a, a toxic waste incinerator. It was the first in the United States. It was new technology, but it wasn't just an incinerator. They were going to bring through our city chemical waste, toxic waste, to be burnt. We fought that, but unfortunately, we visited every home, every resident in the city of Vernon. We could not get one person to sign a petition against it. And they said to me, and I have some parishioners that live there, and they came to me, and they have children, they have children, and they said, "Father, the day we sign that petition, we will lose our job and we will lose our house." And that's the, the attitude, that has been the, the dasle, that's been the, the power of the city of Vernon. Uh, I respect our union members and brothers and sisters, but at the same time, they have to respect that the people around there, their own employees, are, are working in, in an area that Vernon has not cared for. They have not cared for them. The, the power plant, that we fought three years to stop the power plant, would have killed up to thirty-three people a year, and the city of Vernon spent millions and millions of dollars in lobbyists and attorney fees, just as they're doing now, to convince people of the, of the, the, the other alternative to this. So, I, I completely support this, and I ask the council to favor it also.
Mr. Zakaria? I was informed Mr. Zakaria is here. Is he here? If you are, please come forward. Come over to the center aisle, please. After that will be Antonio Gonzalez. Right here, sir, if you could just speak out to the microphone? Good morning.
Thank you. My name is Leon Zakaria. I'm the president of Windsor Fashions. We're a national chain of women's clothing stores, and seven years ago, we decided to relocate, relocate our, our distribution center, um, to Vernon, the city of Vernon. And I just have to say that from the perspective of, of a business and, and our employees, it has been the best move we've ever made. Uh, we're extremely happy there. We have fantastic police and fire protection. Um, our utility rates are low, and five years ago, my father was in a major car accident right outside of our office. We immediately had the fire, the police there to take care of him. Service was amazing. Um, and at, at one time, we actually considered moving our whole operation to Arizona, like one of our competitors did. And, but having moved to Vernon, we didn't need to do that. It was such a great environment, and we really don't want to have to consider such a move, and we want to keep our jobs in Los Angeles, because we're so happy in the city of Vernon. It's a great place to work, and we're really appreciative of that. Please don't destroy Vernon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Antonio Gonzalez is our next speaker. After Mr. Gonzalez will be Joe Torres.
Good morning, Council President, members of the council. I'm Antonio Gonzalez with the William C. Velazquez Institute, and I come here to support AB 46. I do commend you for taking out the annexation language from this, uh, resolution before you. I think that clouds the issue. Uh, for us, this is a simple issue. Does Vernon rise to the level of a city? And we think it's very clear that it does not. In many ways, this hearing is a good example of that reality, that is, a city with obvious corruption and scandal issues, clearly, clearly publicly acknowledged, uh, issues, does not have the kind of massive public rebellion and reform movement that, for example, exists in Bell, because there is no one to rebel. Your hearing about the, uh, merits of AB 46 is advocated not by enraged, organized people. A hearing about the merits of AB46 is advocated not by enraged organized residents and citizens, but by clients. On that face alone, Vernon simply does not meet the test of a municipality. It is, in fact, a corporation that enjoys the protections and rights and cover, if you will, falsely, in my view, of a municipality. I am sensitive to the labor issues, my organization is a strong supporter of organized labor. But I have significant confidence that the Speaker, I remind you, this is the highest labor official ever to achieve the office of Speaker of the Assembly with a lifelong tenure in United Commercial and Food Workers Union, is the key negotiator on this bill and I'm very confident that he will reach an agreement with our brothers in labor, sisters in labor, to resolve those issues.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
And I believe that the city or county of...
We have to keep it as... Thank you, sir, we got to keep it as even as possible. Thank you. Joe Torres is our next Speaker. And then Mark Vargas will follow.
Good morning, Honorable Speaker and members of the City Council, my name is Joe Torres, I'm a resident of Los Angeles County. And I grew up in the adjacent and incorporated area of East Los Angeles for almost all my life. And, you know, in an era where it's difficult to get bipartisan cooperation on almost anything, it's encouraging to see leaders coming together today to stop the corruption in the city of Vernon. You know, you can't expect to put apples in a rotten barrel and not have them go bad. Given its history, only by removing the city government in Vernon can we completely be sure that the corruption is gone for good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mark Vargas is our next Speaker. After that is Hector Alvarado.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Mark Vargas. I'm a small business owner who lives and works in downtown L.A. in Councilmember Jan Perry's district. Time is money to me, I'm not being paid to be here. I've taken time out of my work schedule to be here today because I believe what Speaker John Perez is doing here is essential. I have watched for decades the corruption and lack of transparency that plagues the city of Vernon. I've been disgusted by the undemocratic controls that its city officials have put on residency requirements. And I've seen the effect that corruption in this fiefdom has had beyond its borders, where time and again, lax regulation has led to social and environmental injustices inflicted upon the surrounding communities. Most importantly, I've seen outside efforts to impose justice and the rule of law thwarted time and again by a torrent of dollars spent on lawyers, lobbyists, and spin doctors. Yes, Speaker Perez is taking an extraordinary step in bringing forward AB46, but it is in response to extraordinary steps by the city of Vernon to escape justice. If Vernon wins this battle, no one will likely be able to stop them in the future. The citizens of Los Angeles need to stand by Speaker John Perez. They need to stand by the communities of Boyle Heights, East L.A., Maywood, and Huntington Park, who have suffered environmental injustices from Vernon's runaway actions. I ask you to support AB46 today and join Speaker Perez on the side of social justice. Es importante que apoyamos la justicia, que peleamos la corrupción y que apoyamos la población que vive alrededor de pulsión extrema. Thank you.
Thank you, Hector Alvarado is our next Speaker. After that, after Mr. Alvarado will be Sara Mijares.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Hector Alvarado y nosotros somos del pueblo organizado de Maywood. My name is Hector Alvarado, we come from the organized people of Maywood. I have two issues. Primero queremos darle el apoyo 100% a AB46. First of all, we support 100% AB46. Primer punto. First of all, ahorita que está de moda tumbar dictaduras... At this moment, we insist on to tumble dictatorships. Empecemos con la de Vernon. Let's start with the one in Vernon. Que hace Vernon? Vernon no vive, la gente ahí, los gobiernos de ahí no vive, viven otros palacios. The government of Vernon doesn't live in Vernon, it lives in their own palaces. Que nos deja Vernon? Es cierto que nos deja trabajo, pero a las ciudades vecinas nos deja contaminación. Vernon gives us jobs, but also gives us pollution. Enfermedades. Sickness. Y todo lo malo que hace una ciudad donde no tiene residentes y no le interesa los habitantes. And all the bad things that happen when a city has no residents and doesn't care about its citizens. Tenemos mucha asma, muchas alergias, muchas enfermedades gracias a Vernon. We have asthma, allergies, and lots of sickness thanks to Vernon. Por eso queremos apoyar la ley de...
That'll be the last warning I'm doing if the Congress can help us with that.
El otro punto, yo también soy sindicalista, yo también soy unión. My second point, I'm also a member of the union, I'm also a worker. Y me da tristeza que la uniones ahorita presentes están apoyando al capital en vez de apoyar a los trabajadores. It's a shame to see the union supporting capital instead of supporting the workers. Y me da tristeza que por qué no pelean así cuando los trabajos se los llevan a China. And it's a shame though to hear them yelling like this when the jobs go to China. Están apoyando al capital y nosotros le decimos como dicen los aztecas, hermanos a moti huigüi. They're supporting capital and as we call them, they're traitors.
Thank you. Sara Mijares is our next, Sara Mijares. And then Kenya Alcoser.
Good morning, I'm here on behalf of AB46 and in support of Assemblymember John Perez to deal with the issues of city of Vernon, a city that I see that is an elite city, how many of us would like to live in that idyllic city of less than 100 people and run our own cities? But that's not the case in this community. I live in Southwoodia and I worked for the last 10 years in the downtown L.A. and I have to drive through Alameda and go through Vernon almost every day. And the way I feel about it is like secondhand smoke sometimes, that we get affected because of what's going on there with some of the contamination. And I also hear, and I have a lot of respect for business people because I've been a business person and I'm still a business person myself, but I have a hard time listening to business people come here and talk about their happiness of having their business in a city where not the 100 people or less residents run the city. But it's a city where the business themselves supported this corruption for so many years. So how can a business person feel responsible and say, "I'm happy to be here"? So I think that it's time that actions like AB46 get taken place. And when these drastic actions are put on the table, they're not very popular. And sometimes we have to come and support what is not popular, because what's not popular, it goes against corruption in cities like Vernon and other cities. So, thank you, good morning.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Kenya Alcoser. And then Ari Ruiz.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Kenya, soy de la Unión de Vecinos y trabajo en la ciudad de Boyle Heights y Maywood. Mi nombre es Kenya, soy de la Unión de Vecinos, trabajo en la ciudad de Maywood y Boyle Heights. I work in the city of Maywood and Boyle Heights and I am from the neighbors' union. Nuestra organización trabaja con familias. Our organization works with families. Familias que están afectadas por la contaminación que sale de Vernon. Families affected by the contamination that comes out of Vernon. El asma, cáncer y autismo. Asthma, cancer, and autism. Y también la contaminación de plomo en la sangre en los niños. And also, children have lead in the blood. Este es un problema que viene del gobierno de Vernon. This is a problem that comes from the government of Vernon. Todos estos empresarios que vinieron a decir que agradecen a la ciudad de Vernon por estar y por tener los beneficios que le da la ciudad de Vernon. All these business men and women that come to thank for the benefits that they get from the city of Vernon. Es porque Vernon no tiene leyes o regulaciones estrictas para decirles que no está bien contaminar nuestra comunidad, que no está bien que nuestros hijos estén creciendo en un ambiente donde están siendo contaminados. Because they don't have any kind of regulation and nobody tells them that it's not correct to contaminate, to pollute the city and make our children sick. Con que la ciudad de Vernon haga una vez al año una feria de ciencia, con eso nos solucione el problema de que nuestros niños no estén bien en la educación por tanta contaminación que reciben de su ciudad. To have a science fair once a year is not enough. This doesn't help our children that they don't do well at the school because they are sick too to the pollution. Que queremos justicia, cuando la queremos ahora. We want justice and we want it now.
Thank you. Ari Ruiz is our next Speaker. Ari Ruiz. And after that is Luis Parra. Good morning.
Good morning, City Council, my name is Ari, I'm a citizen of Council District 14 and today I'm here to support our Speaker, Speaker John Perez. I do believe that the Speaker is in favor of union jobs, but what we're not for is corruption. And so we need your leadership today because as everyone who runs for office runs for the intentions to open up government, to be of service to others, and the city of Vernon has violated that trust that they were given, if they were given that trust. So today I support Speaker John Perez in setting up for no corruption, yes for jobs, but no for corruption. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis Parra. Again, for folks who are shouting from the audience, it'll be our last warning, if any of the sides at arms have folks that are making comments of personal nature or are booing, we'll be asked to leave the chambers. Please give them the same courtesy both sides, please give them the courtesy that both sides were given. If folks are shouting things, they didn't do that when your side was speaking, please give them the same courtesy and we will enforce that. Luis Parra is our next Speaker. After that is Ed Varela.
Good morning, my name is Luis Parra, I am a resident and also a full-time student here in Los Angeles. When I first found out about this issue and the actual corruption, I was actually surprised and that's why I came here to show my support to Mr. Perez. The area business leaders cannot trust officials in the city of Vernon to look out for their best interests when it is clear that their priorities are skewed by beyond what is reasonable. No government that pays so much for so little work can be trusted to ensure the companies are being treated fairly. And the old saying that says, "If it looks too good to be true, it probably is..." See, official city leaders have proven themselves that they're willing and very able to say and do anything just to protect their own bottom line and basically their own pockets. We simply cannot allow this kind of uncertainty to threaten jobs and disrupt the local business climate. By this cooperating, the city of Vernon, AB46 removes the bad actor from the undue influence from the community.
Good morning, Council, my name is Edward Varela, I am mayor of the city of Maywood and I'm here to tell you that the city of Maywood supports AB46 and John Perez. And as you heard earlier, some of the employee representatives stated that they have residents that live in Maywood and work in Vernon. And I'm here to tell you that we support AB46 completely and we will always support John Perez, if it's here in L.A., up in Sacramento, or if we have to travel to Washington, D.C., we will always support our representative in the city of Maywood. And I hope that you would also support AB46 in its passage here with this council and I thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Isala Ramirez, Isala Ramirez followed by Pat McCosker. Pat McCosker is on deck.
Good morning, my name's Isala Ramirez, I'm here with Eastward Communities for Environmental Justice. I was born and raised in the city of Commerce, another neighboring city to the city of Vernon. And so today I'm here as a representative of Eastward Communities, a local organization that organizes communities in southeast L.A. where our communities are disproportionately impacted by the negative health impacts of pollution. Growing up in the city of Commerce, I have always known the city of Vernon to be a dark cloud of pollution and corrupt government. When I came back from college in 2007, I was greeted by a dangerous proposal that the city of Vernon was introducing to construct the toxic power plant that Father John already spoke about. Thank God we were successful in working together and stopping that dangerous proposal. However, there's nothing currently set in place to stop the city of Vernon from introducing another toxic site or another toxic source of pollution to give our kids more cancer, more asthma, and other respiratory illnesses. It's very sad to stand here and watch this battle between jobs and community health. A lot of the companies have threatened to leave and are threatening us, saying that there won't be any jobs. But the fact of the matter is that the city of Vernon is currently threatening our health, they are posing a dangerous health situation to so many people, more so than the people that work in the city of Vernon alone, because we're talking about employees there and outside. And so we're here in support of AB46. I hope that you really consider kids like my niece, Lavi, who currently is fighting against cancer, she's fighting the fight of her life, and there are no scientific, there's no scientific data for me to know that it comes from Vernon. But knowing the type of industries that are there now, that are enjoying the benefits that the corrupt city of Vernon gives them, I know that they have something to do with that. And I'm here because I want to make sure that there's a structure so that companies that are corrupt, that don't care about community's health and workers' health, are no longer here. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat McCosker followed by Jackie Rituco. Jackie Rituco next up.
Thank you, Councilmembers, Pat McCosker, President, United Firefighters of Los Angeles City, and a former Teamster that holds a withdrawal card. I'm here, I didn't come today on this, I came with some different business, but I heard what was going on and heard what was said at this microphone and I felt compelled to come here and speak before you, to set the record straight, more than to tell you how to vote on what's really just a resolution of support. I want to set the record straight about a couple of things. First of all, about public safety. I've heard it said that our fire department is the best, it's Class 1, we want to keep them. Let me tell you that our fire department, Los Angeles City Fire Department, is the first, the original Class 1 fire department, the best in the region, and that the city of Vernon or any other small community in Los Angeles in the region would be better protected by Los Angeles, not so much because of the dedication or the skill of its firefighters, but because of the resources that we bring. I worked for many years in the nearest L.A. city station to the city of Vernon and I can tell you that in all that time, there was never any fire of any significance in Vernon that we didn't come in and put out, quite frankly, because we're better resourced, because we have 105 neighborhood stations, half a dozen helicopters, all of that. So public safety from a fire and police perspective would be better protected in Vernon and it's a shame that you're hearing otherwise from people, it's not true. Number two, I want to say that, I'm hearing people say that this is some kind of an attack on unions, I can't imagine that. Let me tell you that when our brother died, a week and a half ago, Glenn Allen died, the city of Vernon, the fire department there, was ordered by city leadership not to fly their flag at half-staff. That was the only fire department in the whole state of California, that is true and I've got the emails and texts to prove it, only fire department in California that didn't do that because of the anti-union attitude of city leadership there. I know all of you very well, I've worked with you for 10 years now, this is a group that is fair, is supportive of unions, and the same can be said for Speaker Perez. So anyone that says this is somehow unfair and would drive union jobs away, I can't imagine that's true. I just wanted to set the record straight. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Jackie Rituco. Jackie Rituco, Lisa Baca Salaga, if you're here, go ahead.
Good morning, I'm Lisa Baca Salaga, I'm the Executive Director of the California Latino Caucus Institute, I'm reading a letter on behalf of our Chairman, Senator Richard Polanco. Due President Garcetti and Councilmembers, I would like to express my strong support for AB46 and encourage the City Council of Los Angeles as a neighboring municipal government to vote aye and also support AB46 as well. After serving in the California Legislature for over 16 years, in 2002 I founded the California Latino Caucus Institute for Public Policy, which serves as a premier nonprofit education leadership development training organization for California. One of CLCI's core programs is the Chrysler CLCI Elected Officials Training Academy. The academy program trains local municipal elected leaders on AB 1234, state law, ethics certification, open transparent brownnet governance, and ethical core values-based leadership in government. In my many years as an elected official and now as Chairman of CLCI, working with over 400 academy alumni, local elected officials statewide, I have not encountered a situation like the city of Vernon. The city of Vernon, in the city of Vernon, only city employees, friends, or family members of the entrenched city leaders are permitted to live in the few city-owned residences at heavily subsidized rates. For decades, the leadership of Vernon has spent public money with little or no oversight. Vernon officials are among the highest-paid public officials in California. Vernon officials are among the highest-paid public officials in California with very lucrative pensions that drain limited state resources. The leaders of Vernon have made no real attempt to reform the city and bring accountability and transparency to its government. In their failure, the state must act to end the corruption that exists. The only way to remove the Vernon corruption is to disincorporate the city of Vernon. Currently, there's no state process to deal with the lack of accountability or transparency found in Vernon. AB46 would create a formal state process, and I ask you to support this.
Patricia Alarcon. Patricia Alarcon. No Patricia Alarcon. This is Vilobos. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, City Council members. I am Frank Vilobos, and I reside in the city of Montebello. I am here in support of AB46, and in particular, for the effort of a very courageous man that stands, he sits here next to me, in light of what has happened over the years. I am also a representative of the Coalition Against the Prison. I served as their leader for seven years. And many of you in the political side saw the struggle of an entire community telling the governor of the state that it was enough to dump on this community of Boyle Heights, and that it was time to allow the people to share the power by allowing us to be heard by our voices. And it's because of that that I am here today to tell you that it took seven years to win that struggle, and that we are prepared to spend another seven years in winning this one, Mr. Perez. We like the case because it's taken it to the state where it began in allowing the city to hold its charter. And that is that it begins in the county, it goes to the state, and then they're given permission to be responsible. In this case, the city over the years has demonstrated that it has not been responsible to run a city. It has failed in many, many federal guidelines and federal laws, in particular, the fair housing law, where it doesn't even have a housing department. For that matter, it doesn't even have a library. It doesn't have all of the resources that are required to have a city. And yet, when they put in the campaign last year in favor of building an energy power plant, they said that it was the city that does more. Well, let's say that this is the city that does more damage to the environment.
Carmen Valencia. Carmen Valencia. Earl Goldberg. Carmen Valencia, Earl Goldberg here. Carmen Valencia, and then Earl Goldberg. And the chambers, and the chambers, and the chambers, quiet in the chambers, quiet in the chambers. Thank you. Sergeant Arms, if those gentlemen do not quiet, remove them from chambers.
Good morning.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I am Carmen Valencia, and I'm sorry that my voice is not as loud as some of these people here, so I beg that you listen to me. I don't have much to say, other than I was born in the area, I've lived there 85 years, by the grace of God, I'm still here. No thanks to Vernon, because I developed sore throats very regularly. They won't go away. The doctor doesn't know why. He says it might be the air out there. I don't know. But anyway, if, if we should be so lucky as to pass Assembly Speaker his bill, anyway, I think, I'm pretty sure that we'll be able to correct the problems that they have there. All I can say is that please be with us, all of you, my councilman, please. Hi. Thank you.
Thank you. Earl Goldberg, followed by Sid. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, Council. My name is Earl Goldberg. I am the President of Goldberg &amp; Sullivan Foods in Vernon. My family has been in Vernon as employers since 1952. I'd like to know how many people, how many people who work in Vernon are here today. Could you please stand? I'm not a politician, but I'm very happy to be involved in this very democratic process where everybody gets to speak their mind. City of Vernon has been about jobs. We've been a successful company for all these years because it's an environment that allows us to stay competitive, to stay competitive even in these very, very trying times. The additional burden by annexation or something similar to that would cause us a great deal of harm with the increase in gross revenue taxes and increased power costs. I'm in the food business. We use a lot of refrigeration. We are also under the inspection of the United States Department of Agriculture. We're also under the inspection of the FDA. And believe me, that we do not pollute. We follow all the rules. And sometimes my friends ask me when they come and visit me in Vernon, and they say, "What is that odor I smell in the air?" You know what I tell them? It's jobs. And that's what Vernon is about. Vernon has been working as an industrial city for over 100 years. Please let it continue. Thank you.
Sid Moranets. Sid Moranets. Moranets. No Sid Moranets. Felipe Aguirre. How about Don Carza? Sir, your name?
My name is Felipe Aguirre.
Felipe? Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, Council members. My name is Felipe Aguirre. I live, work, play, and breathe the air that comes from Vernon. And I also serve in the City Council of the city of Maywood, which is a neighbor of the city of Vernon. And everything that comes from Vernon, there are jobs, and our community, the workers in Maywood, contribute to those jobs because we are the ones that perform them. A lot of those people are not here today because they're working. They're keeping the city going, they're keeping the economy going. This is a contribution of our people to the city of Vernon. We have made the city of Vernon very rich because of the workers that are there on a daily basis toiling. I see them leaving at 4:00 in the morning on their bicycles to go work in the refrigeration plants, to go work in the packing houses, to go work in the warehouses. This bill is very important because it brings things out into the open. It brings things out and says to the city, cities cannot survive as an island. No city can survive by itself, and no city can die by itself. The community of the southeast Los Angeles County have made the city of Vernon what it is, and the city of Vernon has provided jobs to our community, but there's a relationship there that is not going to stop because the city government may disappear. The jobs won't disappear, the people won't go, because that's where the economy is. If the county of Los Angeles will not disappear, our people will continue working there. And as long as there are people living here, there could be people working there. And this is the reason why we support AB46. Thank you very much.
Don Carza. Go ahead, Don.
This is a very sad situation. You have people that have been following a corrupt leadership, that are like lemmings now falling off of a cliff. That's where they left them. And now you have a man that can be trusted, a man with integrity, who's doing the very best effort to weed out all this corruption. I'm in support of AB46, and it saddens me because unions have kept this nation great and going. But when we allow people in leadership positions to be corrupt, have no accountability, they become arrogant, thinking that they can continue and continue and continue, and when they have fed from the trough and there's nothing there left, their arrogance has blinded them to that fact, they get busted, and the people they hire, the people that are around them, wind up suffering. Mr. Speaker, do your job. Do the job that we elected you to do. And I'm here to stand beside you. And I stand beside the firefighters of this city, because when you talk about the firefighters of this city, you're talking about my heroes, and they are Class 1. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
My name is Sid Moranets, and I was in the other room because they told me I had to wait there before I come in.
That's right, sir. Go ahead, sir.
I was born in the city of Los Angeles. I went to Hamilton High School to Los Angeles City College. I got my undergraduate degree from USC and my master's in business from UCLA. And I've lived in Los Angeles all my life. But my business is in the city of Vernon. We love the city of Vernon. The issue about corruption in the city and whether or not the city should be disincorporated or annexed are two separate issues. We in the business community agree that the city needs to be reformed, but we don't agree that we need to be disbanded. Vernon isn't only about a few houses and a few public officials, it's about 50,000 people that work there and 1,400 businesses. Speaker Perez said he found someone who owned a business that said that he wanted to be disincorporated. Well, you know, there are people that think that they've been taken away by aliens and other people that think that Barack Obama was not born in the United States. But that's a few people. If you were to poll the people that work there and the people that have businesses there, you'd find an overwhelming majority want to stay and be part of the city of Vernon. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patricia Alarcon. Patricia Alarcon. Did she ever make it? Just want to make sure she wasn't kept out of the chambers as well. Next, we have Domingo, sorry, I can't quite read the last name. It looks like Resendes. After that is Steve Freed. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak here.
What was your last name?
Domingo Resendes.
Resendes. Got you. Thank you. Please continue.
I have worked in Vernon for 39 years for Baker Commodities. And I hear people saying that there's no residents in the city of Vernon. There's 50,000 residents that go to work there every day, that live there, that work 10, 12, 14 hours a day. And what you guys are doing, yeah, take the corruption away from the government of Vernon, but leave us alone. Let us work. Let everybody that works for Baker Commodities or Vernon stay on their jobs by doing what you guys are doing. And what I understand you guys are going to do, they're going to dismantle the whole city of Vernon, which is 50,000 people plus their families. Keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Freed is next. After Mr. Freed is Dean Richens, I think.
Good morning. My name is Steve Freed. I'm the President of the Vernon Property Association. We represent a lot of the business and property owners in the city of Vernon. There's a couple of misconceptions I wanted to bring to your attention this morning. Number one, that Vernon is a cash cow. We've heard that repeated several times. The city of Vernon is in debt, just like most municipalities. It's not a cash cow. The other misconception is that Vernon spends all the money it raises on itself, and that's not true. 7% of the money raised by Vernon taxpayers, from Vernon taxpayers, stays in the city of Vernon. The balance, the 93% of the tax dollars raised in the city of Vernon end up in the surrounding communities and the other municipalities in this state. Very little of the money that is made in Vernon stays in Vernon. Environmentally speaking, people make it sound like Vernon is polluting in excess of other cities in the region. That's just not true. Vernon is mandated by the same state and federal pollution standards that every other municipality in this country is mandated under. So nothing can be built in Vernon that doesn't receive state and federal approval on its environmental issues. And that's important that we know that. Lastly, there are a lot of people that are against Mr. Perez's AB46, and they are here today. I'd like everyone that is here and against AB46 to please stand. Thank you. We in Vernon, the businesses in Vernon, are looking for reform. We're not looking to be disincorporated. Mr. Perez, we want to meet with you. We want to sit down with you and talk about reform, how you can help us help ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean Richens, sorry if I mispronounced that. After that is Teresa Marquez. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Council. My name is Dean Richens. I'm President of the Vernon Firemen's Association, IAFF Local 2312. We're here to oppose AB46. All cities have their problems, L.A. City, Vernon, Eureka, California, they all have their problems. Vernon has identified those problems. Our city administrator and chief, Mark Whitworth, is taking the steps to correct those problems. Vernon has a vibrant industrial community. We have a great fire department, police department, and public works. We encourage you to oppose AB46. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Marquez is next. After that is Arminak Norriginian.
Good morning, President Garcetti, and good morning, everybody. Where's everybody over here? Okay, well, I'm here to support John Perez. He has proven a record of looking out for the people, and I trust that. What I don't understand is why the employees and companies feel that they are going to be destroyed. I don't see that in SB46. What I do see is regulations to apply to many of these companies for safety of their employees. How many of these employees, I don't, I don't think there's ever been study in regards to cancer, respiratory infections, and so on. In Boyle Heights, I live in Boyle Heights. Let me tell you, there's been research, and our children are dying. There's people with unanswered questions about how the pollution got in their brain and so on. We don't want the companies to go away. I think John Perez will support keeping all the companies. That is a great, great thing that you have in Vernon. But you need to be safe. And let me tell you, from working with AQMD, Resurrection Church, and Boyle Heights, we wonder sometimes how safe you are and what is your health like. Please, look at John Perez and support him, listen to him. He knows what's best, and this is why I'm here to support AB46. Thank you.
Thank you. After that is Megan Martinez.
Dear fellow Angelenz and Vernon residents, as a resident and big compatriot of the city of Los Angeles, I believe I actually support Item 14. I support an action, city, small town of Vernon, by the great Los Angeles city. It's because city of Vernon is very small, and actually, most of its residents actually will support, I believe I will support it, an action of the city. And what's most been to do in this situation is actually issue referendum and offer all residents of Vernon to vote on this issue, because they might oppose it in courts, you know, in contest with an action in courts, and when it will be found on Constitution or something, and it will be difficult to annex the city of Vernon without approval of majority of its residents. And I believe that- And I believe that we should audit, the city of Los Angeles should have high independent auditors in order to audit all those books of the city of Vernon to see if we have, if we have any resources. And I believe that most of the union workers shouldn't be afraid of an exen of the city of Vernon by the great Los Angeles city because we will keep all our jobs. The city of Los Angeles government won't go against union jobs in the first place. It will, all those departments will tend, but wasteful spending would be eliminated. The city of Los Angeles will be able to eliminate its bureaucratic structure, which is redundant. And most of the city of Vernon, you know, bureaucrats receive extremely high wages, which are very unfair with residents, you know. And I believe that the main vote is for Vernon residents. We should vote on this issue because otherwise it will be, an exen will be recognized illegal by courts, you know. And I believe that democracy should prevail. You wish, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Mr. Noorjinnian. Our last speaker is Megan Martinez.
My name is Megan Martinez. I am a student from Resurrection School. I am 13 years old and I currently am in the eighth grade. I stand with Speaker John Perez. If you do stand with John Perez, please stand. According to John Perez, The Times has clearly demonstrated that Vernon operates like a racket benefiting a few wealthy families with no independent electorate to hold leaders accountable. John Perez introduced AB 46 to remedy this situation by disincorporation burden. This is the only viable option. Any other option would take years to complete and will ultimately be fatal as it culminates with the vote of the people, as the LAFCO process does. As your reporting clearly shows, there is no independent electorate in Vernon. So an election defeat is a foregone conclusion. John Perez's bill establishes uniform standards for a population floor to California cities. And even though it will only affect Vernon, it is sound constitutionally. The issue here is one of the transparency and accountability and the complete lack thereof in Vernon. The situation is intolerable, and AB 46 is the only viable pathway to ending the abuse of power in Vernon. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for your patience and for all your public comments, your vigorous public comments. We did have some cards that came in after we cut off. Those will be in the record. We'll make sure that those names are entered into the record as well. I'd like to invite Speaker Perez forward to the table, if you want to come forward to the table, to make some comments as well. And as available, obviously, as the sponsor colleagues of this legislation for any questions that you may have. Welcome, Speaker. Good to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, council members. I especially want to thank Councilmember Hahn for bringing this issue before us. I'm asking your support of my legislation, AB 46, which will put an end to the corruption in the city of Vernon. And we've had a good deal of conversation today about the impact of this legislation on jobs. As many of you know, I spent the last year fighting with our previous governor to protect 400,000 jobs in the state of California that would have been eliminated if he had his way in addressing the budget of the state of California. We were successful in protecting those 400,000 jobs, and it was working with you as council members and other leaders throughout the state that gave us that ability to be successful. You also know that I spent the 15 years of my life prior to elected office representing private sector workers in just about every industry, including spending time as the president, I'm sorry, as the political director of the California Labor Federation. Nobody takes the issue of jobs more seriously than I do. I am committed through this process to do everything that we can in the legislature to protect the jobs that currently exist in the city of Vernon and to make sure that we maintain an environment that allows for us to grow jobs broadly throughout the state of California. As you'll recall, one of the proposals I put in last year's budget was a $1 billion package of private sector job development. In the end, the governor vetoed that packet, but we're going to move forward and do more work to stimulate the economy together. Now, that's the issue of jobs. We all are committed to working to protect them. Now, what's this bill in essence about? It's about an unprecedented and unequaled level of corruption that exists within the city of Vernon. Vernon is a city like no other city in the state of California. It has fewer than 100 residents. Its last mayor was mayor for 50 years. Between 1984 and 2006, the city of Vernon didn't hold a single election. In 2006, they held an election because people moved into the city to run. Now, why did people have to move in? People had to move into the city to run for office because the city controls all but four of the residences that exist within the city. The leaders of the city of Vernon actually, literally handpick who the electorate is. They populate the city with friends, family members, and employees. Now, you'd think, as the city leaders here, that employees would be an independent voice, the way they are in the city of Los Angeles. When Vernon passed its city charter, one of the elements they placed into its charter is a statement that city employees in the city of Vernon have no civil service protection. So those employees, on a daily basis, have to depend on those council members for their well-being and, quite frankly, their residences, discounted to a rate of $200 to $400 a month to live in that city. It is a city with no independent electorate whatsoever. So in 2006, people moved in, they registered a vote, they declared themselves as candidates. The city responded by hiring armed private investigators to chase them around, condemned their buildings, refused to count the ballots, and accused the candidates of voter fraud. In the end, the county counted the votes. And in the end, there was an evaluation of whether or not voter fraud existed. They found that it did. It was the 15-year mayor of Vernon who was guilty of voter fraud, as was his wife and his son. In that process, the city administrator was also found, committed several acts of unacceptable legal natures. Now, this wasn't the first time. That city administrator and that mayor had been charged in 1978 as well. Remember, they've been there for quite a long time. In the end, the mayor stepped down, as did the administrator. He now collects a purse pension. His purse pension is $509,664.60 a year. That's $42,472.05 a month, more than the average wage of any of the workers standing behind us. They have used this city as a private operation to benefit themselves. This is an unprecedented level of corruption. In any other city, if this occurred, you'd see a popular uprising from the people, calling for the removal of these corrupt individuals. But because Vernon has no independent electorate, it falls upon us in the legislature to take this action. And Vernon is your neighbor. Half of the city borders the city of Los Angeles. The actions there impact us. You've heard from my constituents in Boyle Heights and in Maywood that border Vernon, what the impacts of that corruption have meant for them. I ask that you stand with me in disincorporating the city and then work with me to make sure that we take account of the needs of the business community and the workers in Vernon to protect and grow those jobs through the process. I'm committed to doing that, and I need your help to get it done. I ask for your support of this measure.
Thank you very much, Speaker. I'd like to recognize the maker of the motion first. That'll be Councilwoman Hahn. She'll be followed by Councilwoman Perry, Councilmember Kretz, and Councilmember Zahn. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Many of you might wonder, how we got here? What are we doing here? How do we get ourselves involved in this issue? And I will remind you that we heard the same things that Speaker Perez is talking about. We heard about corruption. We heard about elections being canceled. We heard about people being harassed and oppressed who live there. And so Councilmember Perry and I, back in October, introduced a resolution, introduced a motion asking our city staff, hey, would it be a good idea if Los Angeles annexed Vernon? What are the pros of that? What are the cons of that? We heard from firefighter McCosker saying, we actually have the kind of public safety resources that could serve the city of Vernon well. Well, when it went to the committee, our city staff came back and said, Los Angelos, if this is something you're looking at doing, you can do a couple of things. You should begin talks with the officials in Vernon, and you should support AB 46, the Speaker's bill. And so what we have before us today is a resolution that was drafted by our CLA that says the city of Los Angeles supports this bill. Now, what we've heard today from both sides is a common theme that surely no people in 2011 should feel oppressed by their government. And no government should be allowed to stand that is corrupt. And what Speaker Perez is doing today is dealing with the corruption by disincorporating Vernon. But you must understand, both sides, the angst we heard today, the fear we heard today, people are worried about their jobs, businesses are worried about their bottom line. This is a terrible time we're in, Speaker, terrible time. People are afraid, and rightly so, that if the structure that they have come to know, maybe not love, but have come to know has been a provider of jobs, of stability, of the ability to feed their families and keep their own households going. I heard from a business member who has a family business in a retail food distribution. He's worried that if this action today will cause electrical rates to rise, will cause taxes to rise, will cause, you know, land use issues to put him out of business. And I can't believe, listening to you, that you're going to let that happen with this bill. And I can't believe that any of us around here would support something that in any way jeopardize people's livelihood in this day and age. Everybody's job is precious. Everybody's home is precious. So I'm going to ask you a question, Mr. Speaker. Would you be willing to amend this bill so that it addresses, so that it will, and this is very important, so this will ensure that the 50,000 jobs in Vernon are protected by ensuring the stability of electrical generation rates, public safety services, land use regulations, and will it address this current business tax structure that is causing so much angst in this room? Would you be willing to amend your bill to address those issues?
Absolutely. We've already put forward language that's being, that's being drafted with respect to the land use issues that we've raised, and we're vetting a couple of different proposals with respect to some of the other elements you've raised, in particular, the stability of affordable power that's essential to the business model in the city of Vernon. We're absolutely committed to doing that.
I am so glad to hear you say that. Colleagues, I think we can deal with corruption and we can protect jobs here today. And so I am going to introduce an amendment to the resolution that says the city of Los, and by the way, I am also going to remove the language about the city of L.A. working to annex Vernon. I think that is off the table today. That is not what I believe is in our best interest at this point. So I'm going to introduce an amendment, I would like a second, that the city of Los Angeles will support AB 46 if amended to address the issue of preserving these 50,000 jobs with what I just stated.
I have a second for Mr. Rosenthal and Mr. West.
And deleting the portion about annexation. And then, what's key, Mr. President, I know my time's over, what's key and what's important to get accountability here and to get trust here by everyone in this room? We need to have this come back to us before a final vote is taken in Sacramento so that we know for sure that these issues have been addressed. That will make it a stronger bill, that will make it a more important bill. And we know that today we are standing against corruption, but we are standing up for jobs.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, and you had seven seconds, this fair, you got six minutes open, so you weren't over time at all. Ms. Perry is our next speaker, then Mr. Kretz.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Now, thanks, Ms. Hahn. When I originally signed your motion, you know my interest as a representative of the Ninth Council District just across the way from Vernon was that of the opportunity to increase our business base and to investigate the feasibility of annexation and to look at the possibility of adding tax increment. I wanted to ask the chief legislative analyst to come to the middle table because I want him to answer a few questions. And before he proceeds, I wanted to say to the folks who are here today, I'm also a governing board member of the South Coast Air Quality Management District and have worked with Father and his church on a number of occasions, dealing with air quality complaints. And we will continue to do that. And it is well documented that there is, the issues of corruption and fraud within the city of Vernon are heartbreaking and still merit our attention, no matter what the outcome. Air quality and the way that the city is governed is something from which none of us should back away. But what I want to ask about today is a process question because when I originally seconded the motion, it was never my intention to have it subsumed into something much larger, particularly when we here in the city of Los Angeles are struggling to balance our own budget and to take care of our own house and to make sure that our house is in order. And I think it's really incumbent upon all of us to push back from the emotional language and be analytical about this and go through a process. So I want the chief legislative analyst to tell us about the revenue from Vernon, the expenses from Vernon, the tax increment that is accrued, and also what other procedures are available other than disincorporation. I'd like for you to tell us that on the public record.
Certainly. In terms of the revenue expenditures, actually, the last annual report that the city prepared was for fiscal year '07-'08. So the data is somewhat dated, but the only publicly available data was that. It showed revenues of $190 million and $381 million in expenses. Now, that does obviously include the utilities.
Can you say that again?
$190 million in revenues, $381 million in expenses. Now, you know, clearly on its face, that's very problematic. My assumption is because they have a utility, that there were bonds issued that were part of those expenditures. But in any case, that's the last fiscal data that we have available.
What about tax?
Tax, from my understanding, is, it's approximately $14 million that has accrued in tax increment.
And then about the process?
Now, in terms of the process, I mean, other than, well, the normal process for annexation is a voluntary process. And every county has what's called a local area formation commission, a LAFCO. And that's set up under state law to deal with issues of annexation, de-annexation, boundary changes, et cetera. So the normal process would be an application to LAFCO, and they would look at a variety of issues. Who's going to provide the public safety services? Who's going to provide sanitation? Where is water and power coming from? What does the revenue base look like? Is there an exchange of revenue that has to occur between the agency that is coming from to the agency that is coming to? So that is the process for annexation. So it is true, that's really separate than the issue of whether or not you move to support disincorporation. If that occurred, then the LAFCO process of annexation would occur. So they really are two separate issues.
And just for the people who are listening, you tell them what LAFCO stands for?
Local Agency Formation Commission.
Okay. So thank you, Mr. Miller. And Ms. Hahn, I'm assuming that the motion that you originally introduced is now no longer on the table, and that is certainly fine with me. But while the amendments that you've introduced today, I hope and that you intend for them to go through our committee process so that we can vet them as a legislative body. That is the only way that I'd be comfortable being supportive of that ultimately because I can't just jump off another cliff today and not know what I'm doing and what the ramifications are. At the very minimum, I certainly would like some analysis done by the chief, our own chief legislative analyst, to look at it from the city of Los Angeles perspective. So that's all I have to say. I'd like to go to the committee.
Mr. Kretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the issue of corruption, of the environmental problems in Vernon... I think the issue of corruption, of the environmental problems in Vernon, none of that's new. I was aware of this when I was first elected to another city council in West Hollywood over 20 years ago. What's new is that somebody is actually trying to address it, and I think it needs to be done, and I commend the Speaker for taking this on. Now, I'm concerned about the labor issues, and I'm a lifelong labor supporter. I helped to found my own union local. I was chair of the Assembly's Labor Committee for six years. There's nothing that I care more about, and I would not be willing to support this as amended if I wasn't confident that, I've known John Perez for, I don't know how many years, he is as pro-labor a person as one could find in the entire state of California. He is there as Speaker, I believe, partly because of his support for labor, and I am confident that he will do what's needed, and we're asking for that in this amended motion, to preserve all of the 50,000 jobs that are there now and to take all the steps that are necessary to make that happen. We're counting on that, John, because we're going to support this, I believe, I'm going to support this, but with that one concern. And we know you're going to work with labor, and we know you're going to work with the business community to make sure that all those jobs are protected, and this motion, while it cleans up the corruption and it begins to address the environmental problems, doesn't cause harm for the business community and the workers of the city of Vernon.
Thank you. Mr. Zine is our next speaker, followed by Mr. Wiesar, Mr. Cardenas, and then Ms. Hahn and Ms. Perry for a second.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Speaker, I think we need to commend you and not condemn you, and what you have taken is the bold step that our district attorney, Mr. Cooley, is pursuing, that our now governor, Attorney General was pursuing, and just a little tidbit of information about the city of Vernon. And I'm a very conservative individual, and I look at you as a labor leader who's trying to bring respectability back to the community of Vernon. 1905, the city was incorporated, 5.16 square miles, that's what we're talking about. 91 residents as of the 2000 census, that's 25 households, medium income of $60,000 to those individuals. Exclusively industrial is the slogan from the great city of Vernon. The issue of who's been there in the past, Bethlehem Steel, Alcoa, Owens Glass, American Can, Studebaker, General Mills, Calcan, so it has a proud history. I know Farmer John is still occupying their site at that particular site. As you mentioned, the rent's $200 to $400. Who can get housing for $200 to $400? You can in Vernon if you know the right people. The officials, when it comes to the corruption, I mean, I think the people in Vernon should be outraged, the people in Bell were outraged, but when you look at some of the compensation, $1.65 million for one individual, $785,000 for another individual, $570,000 for another individual, $800,000 for another individual, and one individual retires on a pension worth than half a million dollars for a city less than 100 people. The people of Vernon should be outraged with this. They talk about Bell, and they talk about corruption in government, and you look at some of the staggering figures and the indictments brought down by the district attorney, by the Attorney General, and I don't know why the people in Vernon aren't outraged. I don't know why the businesses are not outraged, because the more that those politicians are taking, that's less for the businesses to use for their particular purposes. And when I look at what you're doing as the Speaker of the Assembly, a pro-labor individual, people should be applauding you and not condemning you for taking this action. And whether L.A. gets involved in the annexation, if it's not annexed, the bottom line is, you need to remove the poison, and the poison in Vernon is those corrupt individuals who have really taken anything and everything in the dollars and walked away with it. So I commend you for what you're doing. I think it's the right thing to do, but the DA is still investigating, the Attorney General is still investigating, and you've taken the bold move to say enough of this. So I commend you for that, and I think the people should applaud you for your bold move for making this happen. Thank you.
Mr. Wiesar.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And when I heard this item in Planning Land Use and Management Committee, I wanted to bring it forward to the full council so that we could hear it here. I thought it was important for us to vet this out and ensure that some attention and light is paid upon this. Mr. Speaker, I commend you. I know that you and I have stood shoulder to shoulder with the community, of all heights, as we fought off the Vernon, the proposed Vernon Power Plant that would have created more energy than the city of Vernon needed, but they're willing to put profit ahead of people's health. And that is what concerned me when I saw that a city is not willing to work with its neighboring city in addressing issues that does not see political jurisdictions, but simply sees the health of people, and when a city does not want to work with its neighboring city, we have to take aggressive action. And that's what is happening here, Mr. Speaker. I applaud the amendments that Ms. Hahn has made. I think it's taken into account, as she very articulately mentioned, that the importance of not taking away jobs at a time when that is the number one issue for all of us across the country. I hope that this moves forward, and we vet out the need that we need to have better neighbors, because at the end of the day, a person's health is much more important than profit. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Wiesar. Next speaker is Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I support this motion, resolution, excuse me, even as amended, and also I'd like to thank you, Mr. Speaker. Having been a former legislator myself, knowing how busy the Speaker is, you are responsible for your district that elected you, and I think you're being responsible with this motion in addressing an issue that's going on in your district, with this city that has convoluted into something that is not so much about the people of the city, but it's about business. And the way that that city has conducted itself is certainly not worthy of continuing, and you've been bold enough to introduce this bill, and which happens extremely rare in this state and perhaps any state in the Union, but I just want to thank you for taking on the bold step and responsibility of doing so. You get a lot of attention as a Speaker, but as you can see today, it's divided between positive attention and attacks toward you as to what is this man thinking. But I know you well enough to know what you're thinking. You're thinking about the people of Vernon, you're also thinking about what's good for the business and the environment that emanates out of Vernon. Because when you have businesses, like the ones that were mentioned earlier, that before the days of regulations and the permits that were given in that city, there's a lot to be said about how they've affected the environment, unfortunately, and how we cannot continue a body of individuals that are elected to represent that city that perhaps, perhaps are not doing their job, not only protecting their city and their residents and their businesses, but are having a detrimental effect on the entire community of Los Angeles, the county of Los Angeles, the state of California, and if not the world environmentally. So it's a bold step and a tremendous responsibility that you're taking on. I remind all of us, this is the Speaker of the largest state in the Union. We have approximately 40 million people, and we are the number one economy in this country as a state, and yet this Speaker has taken on the responsibility. He could have done it much easier, he could have asked one of the other legislators to take it on so that they could take the arrows. Instead, he decided to say, "This is my district, I'm the Assemblyman, I'm also the Speaker, I have a tremendous amount of responsibility, and this is the right thing to do." That's why I support this, because I see it as the right thing to do. Perhaps there are going to be some people that I've been with 99.99% of the time who are going to be upset at me. Well, that's the nature of the business of being elected. You can't always do what people would like you to do, but you have to always focus on what's the responsibility that you have and what you should be doing. So I just wanted to take the opportunity, Mr. Speaker, for thanking you, for thinking big, even though it's a small city. This is a big issue, and you are not being small. You're being big enough to take it on and to not push it off on somebody else or for another representative for another day. It's time that we take care of this issue, and congratulations on having what it takes to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Krikoyan is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I think I want to follow up on one of Mr. Cardenas's points, because, you know, I don't know if people realize how extraordinary this is to have the Speaker of our Assembly sitting here for hours on this issue at a time of great crisis in the state of California. And some people might be surprised, on an issue like this, asking for a non-binding resolution by the city of Los Angeles, why is the Speaker sitting here? And I've known the Speaker for about 20 years now. I had the privilege of serving in the state legislature with the Speaker. And the reason that I know that he's here is because no one, before he is Speaker, he is the Assembly Member for the 46th Assembly District. And I don't know of anyone who fights more fiercely for the people of his district than John Perez. I was there when he stood up with a jar of polluted water from the city of Maywood and insisted that the water district serving the people of Maywood clean up their act and provide clean drinking water. And he's here now, fighting not just for the people, the few people of Vernon, but also the people in the surrounding area, including our constituents in the city of Los Angeles, Mr. Wiesar's constituents and others, who were impacted by the environmental consequences of what happens in Vernon. And so, you know, while we may have, you know, concerns about why would we wade into this, about the dissolution of Vernon, the truth is, our residents in Los Angeles are impacted about what goes on in Vernon, and that's reason enough for us to get engaged in this. Now, there are very legitimate concerns that all of the working people who are here have about the preservation of their jobs, and Ms. Hahn, I'm glad that you offered your amendment to ensure that that's taken care of. But I know with as much certainty as I know that I'm standing here, that Speaker John Perez would never advance legislation that would have adverse impacts on the jobs of the people that live there. There is no greater champion of working people than the man who's standing in front of us. Now, here's the thing, though. Can, do we want to live, I mean, yes, it's important that we protect these jobs, it's important that we make sure that this, not only our own city, but the surrounding area is friendly to businesses and continues to provide economic vitality. But the city of Vernon folks doesn't provide parks, it doesn't provide libraries, it doesn't provide any recreation, it doesn't provide sanitation, it provides limited opportunities for low-income housing despite the fact that it has all this redevelopment going on there. So is that the kind of state that we want to live in? Is that the kind of region that we want to live in in order to allow businesses to have a higher profit margin? No, I say it's not. And in fact, there are lots of businesses right here in the city of Los Angeles that have to compete with those businesses in Vernon on unfair and unequal ground because of the corruption and lack of services and lack of normal city processes that go on right across our city border in Vernon. So I'm very proud to stand here in support of AB 46, in support of the Speaker's measures, and in support of Ms. Hahn's amendment for it as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal.
First of all, I'm just amazed that there's a little piece of land that has 100 constituents and 50,000 jobs. I mean, this is like one of those little islands off of the coast of Florida that exists for those very purposes. First, I want to thank everybody in the room for coming here and making the democracy work. Thank you for coming here. Everybody. I want to thank you, Mr. Speaker, for having the leadership and the credit and the courage to come here and tell us that it's a corrupt little town, that you want to get rid of that corruption, and we thank you for that leadership. That's the leadership we care about. And Ms. Hahn, I want to thank you for being able to appreciate the dynamics in the room. I got a constituent over there, Earl Goldberg, raise your hand, Earl, for a second. All right, he's got 270 jobs there, and he wants to preserve those jobs. We want to make sure we preserve those jobs, but kick the crooks out, and that's the direction we're going here. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. I rise to salute the Speaker for his work. I rise to salute Ms. Hahn's for her work. What Mr. Krikoyan said, I did want to say something, and I mean this from the bottom of my heart, when I drive around this city and the, in the history of this city, when I go out the city, I love going by Farmer John and the greatest mural ever, ever put on the longest wall in 1948. But at the same time, what the Monsignor said in his great church resurrection, "Let there be a resurrection of Vernon the right way." Let there be a resurrection of Vernon the correct way, and let this tool of government with LAFCO, which is a local agency formation committee, and the County Board of Supervisors right up the street. It's an interesting history that Mr. Zine recited from 1905, to realize that which this city was built and formed in 1781, when 44 people walked nine miles from the Mission San Gabriel to the banks of the river to form the pueblo. And that pueblo has grown, and as things grow, things need to be corrected. So I stand with the amendments that Ms. Hahn brought forward and our Speaker, and I want to second it too. Mr. Speaker, thank you for being here, thank you for being in Sacramento. Let's vote on this.
Mr. Reyes. Mr. Labange.
None from resurrection as well. Thank you, Sister, for being here.
Thank you for remembering the nuns. Let the record show, Mr. Labange never forgets to thank the nuns. Mr. Reyes.
You can see that in confession, too. Speaker, it's a pleasure and honor to work with you. I know you cover about 40% of my district, some of the poorest neighborhoods in the county, in the region, actually, and to be able to bring up this issue in this manner, I think reflects not only the value you place on the human beings and the families, but speaks about our society in general, especially in this very critical time. But I also want to thank you for the flexibility in working through the intricate issues that pertain to the workers and the laborers. This is an impactful statement, but it's also a process that allows for everyone to come together and take care of our workers. So I want to thank you for your hard work and your leadership, given what's at the table and what's at stake. Las personas de la vecindad les quiero dar las gracias y felicidades por el valor que han tenido para estar aquí hoy este día, protegiendo a las familias y nuestra vecindad contra la corrupción, las fuerzas que nos han dañado por muchos años. Muchas gracias. Congratulations.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. And again, I really appreciate this debate here this morning, and we do applaud the Speaker for taking this bold action to end corruption in a city that has really held people oppressed for way too long. And what I love about you is, of course, the fact that the Speaker came here today, sat here and listened for a long time to the concerns, the legitimate concerns that people have, and you said on record you were willing to amend this bill. That's what makes you a great man, that's what makes you a great leader, and that's why I think we are going to support this if it's amended to address these concerns. What's important is that it comes back to us, council members. It has to come back to this body for us to make sure that these concerns have been addressed in your bill. So I'm going to ask Jerry Miller, how does that work? If we, if we, if we say today, yes, the city of Los Angeles supports AB 46 if amended to address these concerns, how does that work? At what point does our lobbyists then say, yes, city supports this bill, or no, they don't support this bill? How does it come back to us so that we can ensure this accountability?
Well, in this instance, I would suggest that you also instruct my office to, to report back when the amendments have been drafted and the bill presented under the charter. The mayor cannot speak on behalf of the city until the council adopts a resolution in support. So in essence, once the bill is drafted, and the language is seen and accomplishes your policy goals, at that point, then the mayor would be authorized to speak on behalf of the city in support of the bill.
Well, so then I ask that be a part of this today, colleagues, that we vote to support this if amended, and that we instruct our CLA after it's amended to bring it back to the council for us to, to look at it. Okay.
Sorry, Ms. Perry and then Mr. Krikoyan.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Ms. Hahn, thank you for going through that process, because we are a legislative, deliberative, independent body in addition, and I think we need to remember that. The fact that we will be able to have a discussion as a city council on the record, particularly with respect to the job preservation language, which I think is absolutely key and the heart and soul of the concern of many of the people who showed up here today, and that we will be able to do that as members, and that it will come back to us procedurally.
Yes.
Gives me a lot more comfort than faith and trust. Because faith and trust in politics is not enough. We have to have it on the record, on the public record, fully vetted. Gives me a lot more comfort than faith and trust. Because faith and trust in politics is not enough. We have to have it on the record, on the public record, fully vetted, in full public view, so the people know what we're doing. And the fact that it will come back, and that we will debate it, and we will discuss it, and you will have your amendments drafted, and the bill will be there before us for us to examine as 15 members of the City Council, is a good thing and a positive thing, and I can live with that.
Thank you.
Okay? That's much better.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. And what this does, colleagues, is just give a window, gives a window to the Speaker and to everyone who is here today, business owners, labor, everyone who has an interest in this, to sit down and negotiate this with you, which we know you're going to do before it comes back to the City Council. So, thank you, colleagues. I think we can support this today.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson.
Yes, members, let's call a question.
We have to immediately see if there's an objection? It doesn't beat that. We have to, you have to object to it if you want to. Is there any objection to calling the question? Otherwise, it ends the debate. But you can make a point of order after that still, if it's literally a point of order. But if it's an informational one, you need to object and make sure that the debate isn't closed. Okay? There's an objection that requires a vote. It is a 10-person vote. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Seven, excuse me, six ayes, six noes.
Mr. Kocorin's the last person on the queue, just so everybody knows anyways. Mr. Kocorin.
Thank you very much, colleagues. Just as clarification of Ms. Hahn's amendment and what she stated, so that we're clear, our position today will be support if amended. And the lobbyist that we have in Sacramento will, right now, as of the moment this becomes effective, have a support if amended position. Now, there will be a report back at some point in the future, but our support for this bill is not contingent on that report back. Our support if amended position occurs right now. Now, when it gets reported back, then we'll have an opportunity, if we choose, if the amendments are inadequate, we can remove our support at that point. But I just want to make sure that everybody understands that our position is a supportive position from today.
So, are you making a motion to vote on the motion?
No, I'm just making sure that we're clarifying that that is what Ms. Hahn is proposing, and that is what we're voting upon.
Okay. Yes. Yep, that's correct. All right, as amended, if there's no objection to the amendment, that will amend the motion before us. Now, we will take up a vote on the motion itself. Excuse me, if we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That passes unanimously. Thank you all. And if we can, we're going to ask folks briefly, because we have a lot of different members here. We're going to have our labor representatives and leaders arranged to leave first, so we can leave in an orderly fashion. If folks will just take their seats for a second, then we'll get everybody else out of here as well. Thank you again, Mr. Speaker, for your time and for very generously being here this morning. If we can, while we're waiting that, one of the items that we have passed needs to be sent faster than forthwith. If we can, I'll move to suspend the rules on number three, so we can send that to the mayor right away for a signature. Please open the roll on suspension of the rules. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And with that, I'll move to send that to the mayor right away during the meeting. Okay? Next, we'll take item one. We have a single card on item number one. If Nina Royal is still here, like to, I know that there's some folks that may make it difficult to make their way up to the podium, so we'll wait for you, Ms. Royal, if you're still here as our Speaker on item number one. And then I'm going to withhold on item number one after she speaks. While we're waiting, why don't we take up item two? While we're waiting Ms. Royal to come forward, please open the roll on number two. Now, we have 12 members. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Corretts.
If that item could go forthwith.
Absolutely, we'll send two forthwith without objection. Is Ms. Royal in the room? I think she may have left the room. With that, then I will move to withhold on the ordinance on item number one, colleagues. That will kick it to next week. I'm moving to withhold on item number one. We'll kick it to the second reading for next week, okay? So, that'll be up next week for a second reading. I'm withholding on it. That'll take us next to item number, number 15. We have cards on item 15, and then Mr. Wesson, I think, is going to direct some action again on 15. We have, on item number 15, we have five cards. We'll start in the San Fernando Valley. Miriam Fogler is our first speaker, in Van Nuys.
You know, we didn't have public comments, folks. So, we've got people here that wanted to do it first, such as Rick. You know, this is outrageous. You're taking advantage of this, Brown's giving you the leniency. And, you know, what's going on in Wisconsin, you people are bringing it to fruition. And this is an outrage to the labor force. And your unions, you wake up to the fact that the CRA is eating up all that money that you should be giving back to our core services for the public, the taxpayer, shouldn't be ripped off. You people are supposed to, the unions are supposed to be representing the public, as well as the workers. You know, this is an outrage that you allow this thing. Ernie Bernardi stopped this thing with a 2.4 cap, 2.4 million cap in downtown L.A. He was the most vocal opponent to $930 million. You got the gall to put this on us and help this resolve, to give this private agency the salvation to protect itself. What an outrage. We should have the same thing that happened in Bell here. You got the lot of nerve to tack this on us. Your salary should be taken away. You need to be, the pensions and health care for the workers that are here now shouldn't be affected. The ones coming in, unfortunately, you're going to have to, we're going to have to compromise on the new ones coming in, unfortunately, and we're going to have to protect them from further negligence by your actions, that you are the ones who've been physically responsible to be the ones who've been in charge of this administration of this city. What an outrage.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Donna Perman, also in Van Nuys. After that will be Mike Colker.
Finally, I can't believe it. Finally, we get to speak about this $930 million that I didn't think that you were probably going to wait until we weren't here. And I can't believe that the City of Los Angeles allowed $930 million for one CRA project. You talk about Vernon is correct, corrupt, and all the things that we need to do. How about the City of Los Angeles and the politicians over here allowing the CRA to have such a large allotment, that one project can cost $930 million, mostly be used for regrades because they, CRA took so long to make the project in the first place. In the meantime, they're going, we're talking about the pensions of the city employees and health care, and nobody does anything, people won't really do anything about the CRA projects. This is ridiculous, $930 million. I mean, couldn't we very well do without whatever this project, this $930 million? I think we can easily do without that, and then we would have a lot more money that we can put back in the City of Los Angeles, that we can use it to help all our city services. We wouldn't even need to do anything with libraries, we would have all the CRA money. We need to put all the CRA money back in place and save all the city services that way. We have all the resources right now. We don't need any other resource. We don't need to hurt the city employees. We don't need to make them pay for medical. We have all the resources right now and the CRA money. Corrupt, they're corrupt redevelopment agency. And then we can do it with this new city employees after the CRA is gone.
Thank you. Mike Colker is our next speaker. After that will be Teresa Marquez.
I'd like to ask that Mr. Reyes be at the.
He's taken off the board. He's not here right now, sir. So, if you'd like to be heard, this will be the time. Thank you.
My name is Mike Colker. I'm an elected member of the Atlanta Eastside CRA Project Area Committee. As you know, I spoke to you before, with unanimous massive community support from the neighborhoods of Ball Heights and Lincoln Heights, Mr. Weezer's and Mr. Reyes's district, who's not here, we have supported a resolution to support the governor's plan to eliminate the CRAs in the state, including the CRA LA and our own district. I think it's offensive and corrupt that this, what the agency is doing on many, many projects in our district and outside our district. The Sears Tower, which is in Mr. Weezer's district, I believe, on this list of projects, $920 million, has $20 million towards it. There's never been one single public hearing in front of the Atlanta Eastside CRA Project Area Committee required by the law. Outside our district, the Vine Street project, the last number I heard about a month ago was there was $7.9 million that the CRA has invested in that property. They bought it from a developer for $5 and a quarter million. They've sold it to the developer, the same developer, back for approximately $800,000. This is obviously corruption. Going further, the Broad project, which is on this list also, Mr. Broad, I'm sorry, the Broad project, Mr. Broad is one of the 100 richest billionaires in the country. The project he proposes is not a museum, it's primarily a private offices, it's primarily private storages for his art with a gallery on the top floor only. Mr. Broad, the same approximate week that he got approval of $52 million and further land, he gave $150,000, according to the L.A. Times, to the mayor's campaign to seat three people on the City Council, to get around City Council, I mean, get around ordinances. This is corruption on a massive level. In addition, three of us were at the meeting, I believe it was on February 3rd, of the commissioners, where after the meeting was closed out, all the commissioners, under the direction of the head of the CRA, stepped across the hall and had a separate, private, non-Brown Act meeting. One of the people that observed it was not only myself, but the president of the Ball Heights Neighborhood Council. This agency is corrupt and must be ended. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colker. Teresa Marquez is our next speaker. Is Ms. Marquez still here? Let's see here, and then Pat McCosker is our last speaker. On item 15, Mr. McCosker.
On item 15.
We're just taking the public hearing. Mr. Wesson's, I think, going to move continuo.
On item 15, thank you. I'm here about the redevelopment money. Listen, I want you to know that firefighters are for redevelopment money being spent in the city. Anytime that you're talking about building affordable housing, about taking care of the poor, about making blighted communities better, we're for that. Obviously, though, we're concerned about corporate welfare, about handouts to developers, about money being spent, redevelopment money, tax dollars being spent, that don't come back to improve life for the people of this city, that really go into somebody's pocket and improve their bottom line. What the governor's proposing right now is redevelopment money no longer being set aside that way, but rather being given back to local governments and districts and counties. And what I'm hearing is that about 20% of that money, or about $200 million a year, would come back to Los Angeles in the General Fund. I don't have to tell you people how impacted the General Fund is right now, how starved for dollars it is, and what the impact is on public safety in our department. We're closing 22 fire companies, nine ambulances, and a whole host of other stuff every day because of the loss to the General Fund of revenue, the impact on the budget. So, I want you to take a hard look at this. I do not want, we support what the governor's trying to do, if the money will come back to the General Fund, but perhaps a balance can be struck so that money can be spent on truly blighted areas and truly making life better, safer for people of Los Angeles, while at the same time enhancing the General Fund so that you can go back to providing the level of public safety that the people of this city deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dowd?
Yes, thank you. Late getting the cards in, because they were holding us outside, so it's good. We had this on the agenda a couple of weeks ago, so I'm going to talk about it. It's the billion dollars to the CRA, and they're right, you could be saving the city with the real things that are required. We need the fire department because we live in a world where there's a lot of risks right now, and fire, storms, and the water infrastructure, all these things in the city, earthquake risk, you know, these are the things you're going to need in an emergency, so get this money into the reserve fund. We need money in the reserve fund in the City of Los Angeles. It's a nightmare. Like, right now, you're running by the skin of your teeth, and there's no emergencies out there. But, boy, I don't want to be here, and I hope the city, the constituents, vote you all out in the upcoming election because of where you've put them right now.
Next speaker is Rick Nightingale in Van Nuys.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. I'll tell you, this thing about the CRA, and the magic word is "blythe area." But then I turn around, I saw that this could go anywhere. I mean, shopping centers, and, I mean, it's open to anything that they want to build. And I don't understand what happened to free enterprise. I mean, that's what this whole country has developed, is free enterprise. And then you come up with this thing, "blythe area," that, oh, well, this is the needy people that need it. Well, this is why contractors, and I was one at one time, that you bid on a job, and you get the job, and you do the job, and that's it. But then, all of a sudden, it starts at one price, and it goes way overboard, whatever the normal price that you bid the job on. But every one of these CRA jobs, it just goes outrageous that somebody gets paid off and somebody, the money is going elsewhere. I mean, there is no reason to turn around and have this CRA money around. There is enough contractors and building going on and so forth. And this is about needy people, and they don't have the money, and so forth. I really feel sorry for them, but that's why they call, it's called education, that you turn around and you go get educated. I went back to school to get more educated, to get a better job years ago. I don't hear about, oh, the schools are so overcrowded at night that we're going to have to add extra classes and so forth, and turn around and we need a bunch of extra class of languages to learn and so forth. I don't hear about this, that if you get more education, you get a better job. And that's the way, the American way to go up and get a better job is education. And I don't see that. And the CRA is the biggest ripoff. It's unbelievable. And the Council is behind it, and look at the governor's even trying to get it thrown out. And you people aren't doing a thing about it, they're putting more money into it and keep going on and on and on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is John Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org, emailing at Hollywood Dems, D-E-M-S, at gmail dot com, and Facebooking at Mickey Jackson, M-I-K-I Jackson. I don't know what's going on here. As you know, we hired a lawyer, Dennis Winston. He sent you a letter, he sent the CRA a letter. What it said was that when the CRA passed this original motion, that it was in violation of the open meetings law. We now have received a letter back from the CRA, our attorney, Dennis Winston, agreeing with everything we said, and I quote, "In an abundance of caution, we will take this measure and start all over again." The CRA, and we have the letter, we will give it to the press, the CRA says that this was brought to you in violation of California law. I mean, does the letter not exist? Is it psychotic ravings? I'll give you, I'll give you, every single one of you a letter, and I'll fold it four ways before I give it to you, the letter. In other words, this $930 million transfer of funds, this shell, is not in compliance with the law. You must start all over again at the CRA and all the way through, because you violated the law. Now, Dennis Winston, you can call him, you can have the CLA, you can have anybody call him, will give you the letter. This motion you have now is without merit. You're going to have to start all over again. HollywoodHighlands.org. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Wesson, did you want to continue till Friday? Mr. Wesson moved to continue this until Friday. If there's no objection, Mr. Wesson moved to continue that till Friday. We'll go ahead and do that. I see that Ms. Royal did come back. We're going to reconsider item number one, which we had just, why don't you come forward on item number one? And we haven't done general public comment yet either, so don't worry.
I also had a public comment.
Yeah, we haven't done general public comment yet either. That's what I was letting you know. If we can reconsider item number one, please. Hold on one quick second. And please titulate the vote on reconsideration.
11 ayes.
Okay, on item number one, we'd love to hear your comments. Thank you.
Item number one. My name is Nina Royal. I am the safety chairman for the Sanlance Tahanga Neighborhood Council. The Sanlance Tahanga Neighborhood Council voted to support the ordinance to contain the proliferation of medical marijuana stores in communities. Sanlance Tahanga had between 14 and 18 medical marijuana establishments within a four-mile radius. We need this law enforced. I know that you're going to extend it, but we need something more permanent, and we need to have the situation remedied. So we're counting on you to do this. We are in support of the ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the action that I took, which I'll take again, is to withhold on that, which means it goes to the second reading automatically, which doesn't require a unanimous vote. So that will be next week, one week from today. Thank you. We'll next go to one other item before we take up general public comment. We have had a lot of folks who are here for these public comments as well. This is items eight, nine, and 10 that we have been requested to take up together. And, Mr. Reyes, we're going to take up the items on eight, nine, and 10, and I know Mr. Rosendahl as well won't speak on that, but we'll recognize you first, Mr. Reyes.
Mr. President, for the record, amending motions 10A, 10B, and 10C have been circulated.
Yes, yeah, you're sorry, Mr. Reyes, you've been recognized.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, items eight, nine, and 10 is a body of work that goes back six years. I want to thank my colleague, Councilman Rosendahl, for the joint committee between transportation and planning land use and management. It was a culminating committee meeting that addressed some very significant issues that speaks to how this city performs. It's a cultural shift towards different types of transportation, different modes, bicycles. I see Mr. Baum out in the audience, Alex Baum, who has been one of the leaders going back almost over 20 years. Thank you, Mr. Baum, for being here, an amazing supporter of the bicycle system and the whole process. Colleagues, item eight, I speak to you so that we can approve the item. It is essentially requesting a quarterly status report on the implementation of the 2010 plan initiated by motions from Councilor Corretts and Garcetti, and essentially is asking for accountability and making sure that it's being implemented. It would come to Plumb, it's a friendly amendment, and I thank you for support. Item number nine, I would ask that we approve its implementation plan. Its key component is to ensure that the bike plan is a living document that achieves measurable results. I'm looking forward to the addition of bike lanes on Seventh Street in my district. If we implement this, we will be able to add to a body of information that requests economic data. We can gather this information and look at how we assess the impact on businesses along this corridor. Essentially, it'll give us bottom-line results and improve the environment and how we can move the whole process of opening up more opportunities for bicycles to ride in our streets and hopefully eliminate the myth that fewer lanes means more hardships on businesses. It's a matter of fact that we have more complete streets, wider sidewalks, more bike lanes, we have more pedestrian traffic, and should enhance our businesses along these corridors. And this request for that study. On item 10, I'd like to thank the Department of City Planning and the Department of Transportation for bringing this a long-awaited plan forward. Like I said, almost six, seven years in the process. I'd like to thank the many advocates of the community and the community members who contributed their time and knowledge to this plan. I think it puts Los Angeles on the right path towards developing a comprehensive network that addresses all users with varying levels of ability and comfort riding in an urban environment. It is also a key component to create a more livable, environmentally sustainable city where bicycles are a critical part of the transportation infrastructure as well as the recreational infrastructure in areas such as the Los Angeles River Bike Path. I look forward to working ahead to revise our street designations, implement complete streets, and really take this plan to the next level. In a very general sense, colleagues, we're giving the council a toolbox, a chest to work with. We are not changing any streets as of this moment. The general plan is identifying these opportunities. It is up to us and the mayor's office to find the resources to implement these changes. What they have given us is a great map to work with. They have created different levels of circulation patterns, systems that speaks to safety, enhancing our environment, and moving forward in a plan that is very, very constructive. So when we work at the issue of bike paths, pedestrian paths, equestrian paths, all those issues could be addressed in the future by each council member who takes on these kinds of opportunities. Some might think of them as challenges, but it's set before us so we can move forward. So I can ask the staff to come to the table, please. Can you please introduce yourself and just give us a quick summary of what this process does?
Good morning, councilmembers. Michael Legrand, Department of City Planning.
Amir Sadadi, LA DOT interim general manager.
And Ken Bernstein, Department of City Planning.
A quick summary, because I know Councilman Rosendahl, as chair of transportation, has also addressed these issues, and I'd like to leave open the dialogue for him as well as a partner in this process and joint committee process.
Perfect. Councilmembers, this is a very important day for Los Angeles. As we look at ways to get away from the car-centric culture of Los Angeles and move to multiple modes of transportation, bicycling is the most important thing to get us there. It's something most people can afford, and it's something most people can do. And we think it's very important in terms of the land use sustainability and healthy environments initiative that the department's proposing. This bike plan has a lot of consensus. We've worked with stakeholders from all across the city to bring to you a plan that really moves the planning department as well as the city in a direction that's very positive for Los Angeles. Having said that, I'll have Mr. Sadadi say a few words.
Thank you, councilmembers. And as Mr. Legrand mentioned, this is a historic day for Los Angeles, where we're putting together a great map, a DNA structure for the backbone of the city's bicycle master plan. And this wouldn't have happened without the partnership and the great teamwork between the city planning, DOT, and all the staff that worked together through those many, many meetings and listening to all the different sides on how can we do this better. So I congratulate Michael, you and your staff, and as well as my staff, Michelle Maury and Kong Hu, on this very historic day in not only putting the map together, Councilmember Reyes, but also the implementation. And I think that's, you said the key words. Now, we've got a map and a tool chest, but it will be up to you and the mayor and the stakeholders to figure out a way to get those 200 miles built. There will be some challenges, but I think we can do it together.
And I think, as Councilmember Perry just shared with me, we now have an opportunity to open up different approaches, different methodologies to raising money, to look at business corridors, to see how we can leverage these opportunities to create environments that allows us to fund these positions. So with that, I want to thank Councilman Rosendahl. He has taken this issue to another level. I had been sitting dormant for some time in the Transit Committee, but with his energy and leadership, we were able to reach this juncture. Well, thank you, Councilmember, for your hard work.
Thank you, Councilmember, for your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
In fact, Ed has been on this issue for as long as he's been on the council. Frankly, I don't want to go through a lot of valley who here right now. I just want to say a couple of quick things. Tom Labonge, I want you to take some of my time right now, because the equestrians and the hikers have an issue. The cyclists seem to be all together pretty much on this issue, and I want to keep the 12 votes so we can move forward with it. Mr. Weston will come back by the vote. But frankly, to get 200 miles going in the right direction and make safe bike paths is the key element for me. And I want us to report back periodically, and I want to say to the cyclists and everybody else out there, if you want to tweak things or you think things need to be modified, this is a work in progress. I'm not leaving, at least for the next couple of years. And if the people want to give me a third term, then I'll be here for the next five years through that plan. That's at least my plan, is to see that all this is constantly renewed, constantly looked at, and that we find new avenues and new ways to go it. When Alex Thompson in my district opened up that bikeway thing there, and I went in there, and he's asking me to get on a bicycle, because, you know, I'm fighting hard for this, I will get on when somebody gives me a safe passage where I can move forward with. As a guy who's 65, I've got to be real careful. I don't want to end up like the mayor did, getting slapped around a bit, okay? All right. All right, so with that as a backdrop, I want to say a lot more, but I'm going to hold it and just give Mr. Labonge the moment who has worked tirelessly to put amendments together and to be building consensus.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. This is an important document, but also there's an important amendment. And, Mr. Legrand, you helped me craft that in our meeting here. The amendment calls for the recognition of the Parks Commission, that the Parks Commission is responsible for the Parks Department. There's a representative of the Parks Service here, and if you could just state for the record about the interest that their commission has, because the planning department necessarily does not have jurisdiction over the Park Department. Is that correct?
Correct.
So anything, when we deal with the parks, because I appreciate, Mr. Reyes, so much for what you do in land use, the river, Mr. Rosendahl on transportation, this did not go through arts and parks, it went through transportation, it went through Plumb. So we have to protect the interests of the parks, and we're working with the cycling community, which I'm proud of what they have done through the years. But this, now, I want to hear from the Parks Department to assure our hikers and our equestrians are in the mix here as we go forward. Please.
Hi, my name is Melinda Guyer with Recreation and Parks, and I just wanted to let everyone know that we are in support of the amending language that was added to policy 3.3.5, which regulates and strengthens the fact that any change in use of a trail within a park falls in the jurisdiction of the Commission of Recreation and Parks.
And with that being said, as we deliberate on this here, I'm proud that my parents in the 1930s rode on the Los Angeles River. I'm proud when I worked for John Forall to get the first river bikeway built. I'm proud when I got elected to get the Alex Baum Bridge built at Las Feliz with the help of DWP to get it across Las Feliz. I'm proud of Eric Garcetti and what Mr. Reyes has done to extend the bikeway on the river. But it's not just the river, it's other parts of the city that we're working on, including Fourth Street, Oxford, New Hampshire, and others, as they match and make an opportunity for people to ride safely and enjoy the city. So I just wanted to say that. I know there's a number of cards. If there is a public hearing, it should be a 10-minute maximum so the people could voice their concerns for the record, and then we could move forward. Thank you very much.
Mr. Corretts, followed by Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Rosendahl.
First, I'd like to thank Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Reyes for all their great work on this, and the fact that this is the most significant progress I think we've made for cyclists, certainly in my lifetime, and I wanted to express my personal appreciation. Now, I have some minor technical changes that planning is aware of, and the goal is to connect some bike-friendly streets to each other in my area. It's important to close this gap for two reasons. Many students at local Jewish schools, including the Shiva Gudawa at Olympic and Cochrane, bicycle to school and currently ride on Alta Vista north of Third Street. And number two, the Fourth Street Bike Boulevard likely will end at Cochrane Avenue. And because Park La Brea and Pan Pacific Park preclude east-west local streets, this northern extension will allow cyclists to reach another bicycle-friendly street that will allow them to travel further west. So the proposed changes are to change the southern terminus of the Formosa Avenue Bicycle Friendly Street with a new description, Formosa Avenue to West Hollywood City Limit at Romaine to Rosewood Avenue. Number two, to add a new Bicycle Friendly Street, North Point City Place to Rosewood Avenue to First Street. And number three, to add a new Bicycle Friendly Street, North Alta Vista Boulevard to First Street to Third Street. This gap closure would use short stretches of Rosewood Avenue and First Street, which are already also included as bicycle-friendly streets in the bike plan. And I thank the planning department and Jeff Jacob Berger for working with us to work out these relatively modest amendments.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you as well to my two chairs who have done a great job and to the public. I mean, we all know there's been a biking revolution in this city. You all have been a part of it. I share the story that I've cut my political teeth actually working on bicycle activism when I was seven years old with my uncle, who along with my father were great cyclists, and he wanted to have a veloway along the freeways, and I licked envelopes. And while that didn't come to fruition as such, and probably it's a good idea it doesn't since that was right next to the freeways, and we don't think we will want to bicycle right next to those fumes, it certainly got me excited about the possibilities in this city. And every single time we reimagine what the city can look like, whether it's ciclovia, whether it's just going with some friends or a commute, is often done on our bicycles. But we still make bicycling way too difficult in this city, whether it's us as drivers, whether it's us as a city bureaucracy, whether it is the public at large. But I think we're beginning to change that, led by some great people inside. We have a lot of cyclists inside this city. We now have our own bike lockers and showers here for people who commute as city employees. And I think as we've changed that attitude, there's a lot that has changed on the physical landscape as well. Thank you to extraordinary work from our departments on this, and I want to thank Joe Linton, who's my appointee as well, on the bicycle advisory committee, and Marcel Portes for my staff. Mr. Labonge, I fully support and seconded your motion. The Citizens Committee to Save Elysian Park has a lot of reps here today, and I know this is my neighbors, howdy to my neighbors, and thank you for, I usually see you out in the park and share 100% the desire to keep the park the way that that is. There are good places for bicycles, but not on the pathways that we walk on in the morning times. At the same time, we have to make sure for our cyclists out on the streets that they are as safe as we are walking on those paths as well. And one of the things I wanted to point out and just thank for everybody's work, too, is the Technical Design Handbook. This is, if you haven't taken a look at it, you should, but it's amazing. I mean, everything from the length of our bicycles, tandems, and recumbents, to looking at the grades of our bridges, looking at design standards on our preferred designs, what fencing should look like. This is not only good for cyclists, but it's nice to have design standards for a city. This is something, Mr. Reyes, I know is passionate about. In our individual neighborhoods, we've talked about it, but you know you're in LA when you see certain things. It's kind of like you know you're in West Hollywood and you see those blue lights that are on the street that are kind of their emblem. For us, we should have designs that say, you are in Los Angeles right now, and particularly for cyclists, it's a great way to announce they're in a city now that embraces bicycles, that not only wants to make them safer, but make it so that we can reduce our pollution and reduce our traffic for pennies on the dollar of what it would cost to build us out of this. So congratulations, Mr. Reyes and Mr. Rosendahl, and to the bicycle community for a great job. We will protect our hikers and our equestrians while moving forward with a city that is finally bicycle-friendly.
Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Labonge, and Mr. Reyes. Yeah, just rather quickly, I'd just like to, for the record, say a few things. We brought Charlie Beck in and got him engaged with the cycling community to understand and appreciate the needs of the cycling community. There's been four, five, six meetings, and I've heard that the cooperation is really at its best that it's ever been. We amended the traffic study requirements for new development so that developers wouldn't just count cars, but bikes and pedestrians as well. We dedicated a set aside for bicycle infrastructure in our Measure R, a local return. There is money that we will be getting, that we can go forward with it. We have an ordinance coming forward that will create a private cause of action for cyclists that's harassed on the roadway, a first of its kind in the nation. We also have an intern working with city planning to develop new bike parking standards for new development, three fourths for safety. We also today, on the roads, motorists pass cyclists too closely. The slightest error by the motorist or the most minor shift by a cyclist to avoid rough payment can lead to a collision with tragic consequences. Every year, thousands of people on bicycles are injured and killed in California by such collisions. This bill, sponsored in part by the California Bike Coalition and us, would require motorists to give at least three feet of clearance while passing a cyclist. This is stuff that is extremely critical to move forward. What are the details in this plan real quickly? It increases the number and types of cyclists who bicycle in the city. It makes every street a safe place to ride a bicycle, makes the city of Los Angeles a bicycle-friendly community. The 210 plan was designated with 1,680 miles of bikeways. We're creating three networks, a backbone, just think of a freeway, the spine of the system for traveling long distance. system for traveling long distance. Two, neighborhood, think local streets, safe streets for families and short trips. And green, bike paths along the LA River and Bayona. This five-year implementation plan means that we will monitor, assist, and advise the implementation efforts. The groups involved in the Bicycle Plan Implementation Team, these groups composed of city staff for relevant departments, cycling community members, as well as local agencies and municipalities, to create an opportunity for the bike plan stakeholders to develop a rapport and thus facilitate the implementation project. We will also have a Technical Design Handbook to guide the design of the cycling facilities. That's a lot of different stuff, and I just want to put it out there to know that we've come a long way from where we were, and I think this five-year plan will see a lot of action. But I want everybody in the room to know it's always a work in progress, and we need to interact continuously with each other to make it work. I don't know if any of the colleagues are on the queue, are they?
Yes, they are. Mr. Labonge, Mr. Reyes.
Okay, and then after that, if we could let the community respond to what we've said, it would be great as well.
We have approximately 30 cards from the speakers.
Well, here's what I'd like to ask, members. I'm going to give up my time right now, and let's have a 10-minute, a comment period, and if you could, if those who would, if I could ask, yeah, Ed?
I'd like to.
All right. But one thing, no, Ed, I want to make sure, on wearing, from Paramount to Pink's, is that included? From Paramount to Pink's, is that included?
Paramount Studios to Pink's Hot Dogs.
We'll take a look at that while there's public comment.
I just wanted to try to get these guys to laugh a little there.
All right. Council President?
Mr. Reyes.
I did want to rise, and I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge folks like the LA County Bicycle Coalition. They've been tremendous in working with me in West Lake McCarty Park. They bring helmets and lights and safety and education to the workers that, quite frankly, see this as a necessity from getting to their works, their home, and taking care of their daily needs. We've got an amazing culture that's emerging, opportunities, entities like Bicycle Kitchen, Bicycle Oven, these are groups that work with kids. They actually get spare parts, they get bikes that have been abandoned, the youngsters in neighborhoods come, they put them together, they actually put bikes together, they offer them bikes. It's another way of working in the city and being generous and working with our youth, and that to me is worth all the money in the world. You've got folks like Bicycle Pigeon, who are bringing quality bikes and quality products in the inner city, which speaks to an engagement of people of different income groups that can actually enjoy this whole shift in this culture. And lastly, I want to thank Lubavella and Jill Soria from my office, who've been the stewards, that have been helping me get through this process. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Reyes, Mr. Labonge, is the will of the body to have 10 minutes, minute apiece?
Check with the city attorney, if it's one minute and if it's 20 minutes total, everybody could have their comment, so if.
There's more than 20 cards, Mr. Labonge.
You've got to figure that out, Mr. President, so I.
I can figure it out. There's more than 20 cards. If you want 20 minutes, then some people won't be able to speak.
Well, I would like have everybody to work together.
So if you don't want to take up your whole minute, just because you get a minute, you can take less time so everyone can speak. We'll start with Alex Thompson. I'm sorry, Mr. Kocorian, I just saw you flash up.
Go either way. I'd go after if you want, that's fine.
All right, okay, we can hold it then. Followed by Joseph Rayali. Followed by, go ahead, go ahead, sir.
Alex Thompson, Bike Side, Mar Vista Community Council. Thanks for the shout-out bill. I'm gratified to be here today. I'm really proud of this bike plan. I think it's something that makes us competitive with all the other great cities in the United States. I think it's a better bike plan than what they have in New York City. I think it's a better bike plan than what they have in Chicago. I'm pleased that we have the Backbone Network in there. That's a visionary thing that was put together by the bike community, and I think Planning put their signature on the plan and on that policy proposal, so I think that'll work really well, and overall, I think this is going to be a great bike plan for us.
Joseph Rayali.
Thank you, Bill.
Followed by Lynn Brown.
My name's Joseph Rayali. I'm the founder of the Los Angeles Bike Oven out of the Fightin' First District with Councilman Ed Reyes. I've read most of this bike plan, cover to cover, in the last eight hours, and it's really tough for an elected official to make an informed decision about traffic safety in Los Angeles. In this bike plan, there's some momentous steps being made to document the trail of blood on our streets. There's an annual report in Section 2.24 and 3.24 having to do with crashes in the city of LA. This crash data shouldn't be reported annually in the Transportation Committee. It should be available as a layer in Navigate LA. It should be available as open data on Google Maps and Yahoo Maps, and I'd like for you guys to incorporate that in the bike plan. Additionally, the National Bicycle and Pedestrian Documentation Project has standards. They've published federal guidelines for pedestrian and bicycle surveys in that same section of the plan. These standards need to be mentioned, and they need to be brought to bear in the city of LA's annual bike count. Thank you so much for all the hard work on this, council members, and I look forward to working with you on this in the future, Ed Reyes.
Ms. Brown, followed by Jane Harrington.
Hello, my name is Lynn Brown. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am here to represent the Coalition for Safe Trails, an organization dedicated to public safety on city park trails and including the Griffith J. Griffith Charitable Trust, which is, President is Van Griffith, who is the great-grandson of the Griffith family. There are many of the people here that I would list that are under this coalition who are going to speak for themselves, so I want to say, I can't speak for them. I want to say that we support Tom Labonge's motion, the current motion ahead of us to add his motion, and thank you very much.
Jane Harrington.
Hello, I would like to support Tom Labonge's motion to change, to support the amendment for having no mountain bikes on our park trails. The mountain bikes are recreational vehicles, it's not a mode of transport, and they're equivalent to having a funhouse of horror for the horses on the trails, and other park users would also come under some stress from them. So I would like to propose that the mountain bikes be put in a separate category and not put as a mode of transport. As they don't use the regular trails, they tend to come out, jump out of the bushes at people. So, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Kent Strumpel. Followed by Lynn Cotto.
Kent Strumpel, City of Los Angeles Bicycle Advisory Committee. Just want to thank all of you for your hard work in shepherding this along, and it's really ushering in a new era, I believe, for cycling in this city, and I'm very excited to see it get adopted and implemented. And especially want to thank all the staff who've really put a lot of work in this and really responded well to the cycling community, I think, in the past few months. So thank you very much, and looking forward to the implementation.
Hi, my name is Melanie Cotto. I'm a member of the AICW advisory committee, and we support the motion being put forth by council members Reyes and Labonge. Thank you very much.
Joseph Young. Followed by Alex Lance. Followed by Glenn Bailey.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Joe Young, a member of the Sierra Club. I'm a longtime hiker in city parks and greatly love Griffith Park. I want to thank the city and its staff for its tremendous hard work in putting this document together. It was a tremendous effort. There is language in the plan that scares us, and I wish it weren't there, because it could open the door to mountain biking in city parks. That is why we support strongly the amendment put forward by Councilman Labonge and Councilman Reyes, that makes it clear that the existing city ordinance that prohibits mountain biking in city parks be respected, and that any suggestion that mountain biking might be allowed in city parks be referred to the Recreation and Parks Commission. Thank you.
Hi, Alexis Lance, Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition. I think, as Councilmember Reyes has pointed out today, that our roads are currently biased against those who cannot drive because either they're too old or too young, can't afford to because of their immigration status, or because they choose not to. The document before all of us today provides us with a vision of safer streets that provide for more than just the movement of cars, and by passing and committing to the implementation of this plan, we're taking a tremendous step forward towards creating complete streets, safer streets, and a more equitable, healthier, and livable Los Angeles. Unlike plans in the past, this current plan provides an implementation plan, a solid strategy for moving forwards based on need, closing gaps, and creating a complete network. It will ensure that this plan does not end up on the shelf, but integral to implementation is your leadership in your districts and citywide, and we're depending on you to help move this plan forward over the coming days, weeks, months, and years. Thank you so much.
Glenn Bailey.
Glenn Bailey, I am Vice Chair of the City's Bicycle Advisory Committee. This plan makes me think, to paraphrase William Mulholland of 100 years ago, "There it is, take it." You have a comprehensive plan if you can implement it, and I think that's the challenge, as was said, for all of us, every district, cyclists, the neighborhood councils need to be engaged as well, to really, really work and take, to set the stage now for what, you know, as gas prices are going up once again, I can guarantee you, you're going to see a lot more cyclists on the road. If we had been at this position 15 years ago, we would have been able, better prepared to meet those demands, but, you know, now's the time. We can't turn back the clock, but we can start now aggressively and work to improve our street conditions and improve the education of motorists and cyclists to improve the safety of both. Thank you.
Charlotte Brody. Followed by Jeff Chalkelberger.
Good morning, afternoon. I'm Charlotte Brody. I'm Trail Coordinator for Equestrian Trails, Corral 54 in Chatsworth, and we are supportive of this bike plan with the motion by Councilman Labonge and Reyes. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Jeff Jacob Burger, I'm the 10th Council District Representative to the LA Bicycle Advisory Committee. First, I want to thank Councilmember Coretts for making the amendment to fix a little gap in our neighborhood. But also, now the hard work begins, you know? I think LA historically has put bike facilities where it's easy to do it, and in places like the 10th District densely built up, lower income is going to be hard, and I'm looking forward to all of your leadership and support in putting the bike facilities where they're needed and where it's going to be hard to do that. Thank you.
Followed by Mark Langton and Steve Messer.
Good afternoon. Thank you for considering the Bicycle Master Plan, and especially to the staff for working hard to get it to this point. As a native Angelino and avid mountain bike rider, hiker, and trail maintenance worker, I've been riding and hiking in the Santa Monica Mountains for over 40 years, and I've seen all kinds of users out there, and I fully support this plan in its entirety. I especially want to call your attention to Sections 3.3 and 3.4 to go ahead with some studies to see about the feasibility of allowing off-road biking in the city parks. Right now, the youth in the urban areas have no access to these parks by bike, so they can ride to the parks, but they can't ride in the parks, and that just seems kind of backwards to me. So I support the plan in its entirety. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mark Langton, President Concerned Off-Road Bicyclists Association. We support the plan in its entirety. Just wanted to point out that a mountain bike is a bicycle, therefore it is a mode of transportation. The streets should not stop at the trails. There are feasible ways of riding bicycles on dirt paths and trails, and I hope that the plan and the study studies that aspect of the transportation for this plan. Thank you.
Steve Messer. Then Jay Slater. Go ahead.
My name's Steve Messer. I'm the Vice President of the Concerned Off-Road Bicycle Association, and I've been riding mountain bikes for 25 years in the areas surrounding Los Angeles where multi-use seems to work just fine. And the current plan, we support in its entirety. It calls for study of the accessibility of bicycles on city trails, and we know that if that study is carried out, the demand will be demonstrated, and that in surrounding jurisdictions, it is possible for multiple uses on trails to work together and to coexist. So we fully support the plan. The decisions should be made on facts, not hearsay, and if those studies are done, the facts will show that there is demand and that the bicycle facilities in other jurisdictions work just fine. So please pass the plan today. Thank you.
Jay Slater, followed by John Gurfin.
I'm Jay Slater. I am the Chairman of the LA Bicycle Advisory Committee. I too want to express my tremendous thanks to Councilman Rosendahl and Reyes and Labonge and the other members of T-COM and Plum Committee, the members of the Planning Department and LA DOT, Michelle Maurey and her staff. My point today is that there are 15 members of the committee appointed by you, the City Council. They represent each of your districts. There are four of us, myself included, Glenn Bailey, who spoke a moment ago, who are appointed by the mayor. There are four of us. We stand ready to work to implement this plan. This plan should not go the way of the 1996 plan. As Councilman Rosendahl appropriately pointed out, there is money here, there is will here. We have a political will in this chamber. You have tremendous political will sitting behind you among the activist community. Let us all work together and not let this moment get by us, and let's make this a better city.
Thank you, sir.
My name, excuse me, my name is John Gurfin, and I'd like to thank the council for allowing me this opportunity to speak, as the councilmen said that this is going to be an ongoing discussion, and maybe we're starting that discussion right now. I am aware of a bike path that is being built in Councilman Zions' district, and it's 2.2 miles, and we already have one. It's on the Orange Line busway, so it's like 20 minutes from my place and even closer, so why are we going to spend $10 million to do something that we already have? It is quite literally the bike path that starts nowhere and ends nowhere, so thank you.
Gail Wilkie. Gail Wilkie. No Gail Wilkie. Jerry Hans. Jerry Hans. Followed by Christine Peters.
Jerry Hans, Friends of Griffith Park. We're a nonprofit advocacy, education, and service organization. If you haven't noticed, a lot more families are showing up in our city parks for hiking. Economic times, maybe, or maybe parents are realizing their kids need more exercise. Either way, you don't want to ever take that away from them. Mountain bikes mixed with kids on the trails of our city parks creates a very dangerous situation. It's simple physics. Bikes are hard, people are soft, and kids even more vulnerable because of their size. Plus, kids also have that human behavior component, and they occasionally will dart in the wrong direction, perhaps in front of a mountain bike. Friends of Griffith Park would prefer having any reference to biking on unpaved roads in our parks out of the bicycle plan completely. Thank you.
Vicki Brink.
Good afternoon, council members. Christine Peters, President, Citizens Committee to Save Elysian Park. I want to thank Councilmember Reyes, Council President Garcetti, and Councilmember Labonge, and all of you, everyone here, for putting so much work into this. This is a 98% successful plan. I am 100% supporter of the Department of Recreation and Parks' request to remove any recreational elements from the plan. However, I think the amendment, as it stands right now, will protect that in the meantime to make that adjustment later down the road. Anything to do with transportation, we need to improve circulation in the city. We need people to get out of their cars and get on their bikes. We need people walking. So anything to do with Measure R, we need to really get that money working right away to improve circulation in the city. Let's not distract the issue by focusing on recreation. Let's focus on transportation, and let's move forward. Thank you very much.
Vicki Brink, then Susan Borden.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for letting me talk today. My name is Vicki Brink. I'm the Foothill Trails District Neighborhood Council's Equestrian Chair. I belong to the LA Horse Council. We do, I personally like the bike plan completely as far as the transportation part of it. I would request that you drop the mountain bike altogether. If that is not the case, and it cannot be dropped, then I do support the amendment that Labonge has put forth. I want it to stay in the hands of the rec in parks. My only regret is that, the only thing that I have been experienced with mountain bikes is that I was in a trail, we were on a trail rock expedition, and. is that I was in a trail, we were on a trail rock expedition, and two mountain bikes hit us, a plate and two pins in the arm later, and we were hikers. We were not equestrians. So the only thing that I ever know of a mountain bike is coming over a hill, collapsing our arm, and surgery later. So, thank you.
Thank you. Susan Borden. Then we'll go to the San Fernando Valley for a couple of speakers. Susan Borden.
I support the amendment that would give Recreation and Parks the ability to review anything about mountain bikes on the trails. I do support bicycles on city streets.
We're going to go to the San Fernando Valley. Ma'am, just Rick Nightengale, followed by Donna Pearman in the San Fernando Valley. They won't come back downtown.
Yeah, Rick Nightengale. You know, I'll tell you, I couldn't believe why they changed that the bike, you have to go with the flow of traffic. I don't understand why they did that, but then I hear that they were just speaking regarding turnaround, and you have to, a car has to be three feet away from the bicyclist. I feel sorry for the bicyclist, but now why don't you just close one of the lanes right next to it, because there is no way that you can get around a bicyclist to turn around when you're going to pass them. By law, that a cop can write you a ticket for passing too close. Now, you know, I'm sorry, but this is a, this town is made for cars, not bicyclists. I feel sorry for them, because so many have gotten hit, but let's face it, the cars are going down the road, the bicyclist can't see the car, because they're going in the opposite of directions now. That, when I was a kid, it wasn't that way. I mean, you're going in the same direction, and now you have to turn, you have to have three feet clearance? Something's wrong here. I'm really sorry. Thank you.
Donna Pearman in the San Fernando Valley.
Yeah, I also want to agree with Rick Nightengale that I'm totally against having to have three feet. What you have is if you're driving, and all of a sudden you see a bicyclist, and you have to hurry up and get out three feet, and then you have to worry about the other car, and then now I believe this is going to cause accidents. I don't think this is a very good thing, but I'm not taking much time. Thank you.
Sally Newbauer, followed by Al Mogia.
Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Sally Newbauer. I'm Assistant President of the Citizens Committee to Save Elysian Park. Thank you all so very much for the hard work on this plan, and I really appreciate your working with the community to try to resolve the mountain bike issues, issue in our city parks. I'm very pleased that we have an amendment that states that this, this study would definitely go before the Rec and Parks Commission before anything is approved for further mountain biking in our city parks. Thank you.
Followed by Al Mogia, then Carol Bruschia.
My name is Al Mogia. I'm a member of Sierra Club, the Griffith Park section, and a hike leader. I have no objections to the Bicycle Master Plan, except for the exception of the 3.3 and 3.34, which puts future studies for mountain bikes in the park, in our city parks. The problem is that mountain bikes do present a very real and demonstrated danger to other park users. There are some places where parks, where mountain bikes are appropriate, and some places where they're not. And one place where they're not is Los Angeles City Parks, where you have a wide range of people with all kinds of physical abilities. You have young people, old people, and that, and they can't always get out of the way of a fast-moving downhill bike with a rider and equipment that weighs 150 pounds that can't control it at those speeds. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Carol Bruschia. I support 98% of the bike plan, or 99% of the bike plan, as a transportation plan for road bikers. My husband and I have been driven away from many hiking areas in Southern California because of mountain bikers. Mountain biking is a recreational activity, not a transportation activity. Therefore, I would like to see the references in Chapter 3 and Chapter 4 removed from the transportation plan. As a, an amendment, I do support Tom Labonge and Ed Reyes's amendment. Thank you.
That completes our 20 minutes. We are now at 21 minutes, and we have nine more cards, so we can read these names into the record, then proceed. The following speakers' cards will be into the record, and then we'll go to Mr. Corian. Miriam Dodge, Barbara Jaric, Cecilia, I understand you're not going to be able to speak, we're reading you into the record. We've already allocated the 20 minutes and used that up. Cecilia Wagers, Mary Louise Heckman, John Norton, Nina Elasopa, Julia Tarawoski, and Audria Gutman, and Bicycle Master Plan. Those are the other nine. Mr. Corian.
Can I hear from staff first? That's fine.
Pardon me?
Would you rather I speak now or after staff?
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say how important this policy is. It's, it's too rare that we take a long view and do something that really is going to lay the, set the table for the future to the extent that we have in this Bicycle Master Plan, and I really want to applaud all of my colleagues who've worked so hard on this, and of course, our staff who've been really relentless in trying to develop a comprehensive policy, which is, is going to be very effective in creating greater transportation opportunities in this city. My great concern at the time that we discussed this in committee was the, the opportunity that, that this appeared to present for conflict between mountain bikers and hikers and equestrians. And as some of the speakers mentioned, in some parts of our city, this is a very significant public safety issue, and I've had repeated stories about equestrians who have, whose lives have been put in danger, literally, because of the impact of mountain bikers who are illegally operating on trails that are designated for equestrians. So when those concerns were discussed in committee, I very much appreciate the staff went, created amendments to the policy, which I believe will address those concerns. My preference would be to have those recreational aspects not a part of this policy, but because so much work has been put into this, and because this is a comprehensive, well-thought-out policy, I think that the amendment put forward by Mr. Labonge takes us, as well as the amendments proposed by staff, are, take us very far towards resolving those issues, and I just wanted to say how much I appreciate this work, and I think that it's, I think for all of my equestrian friends and for the hikers out here, this, these amendments that we're going to be discussing today, I believe resolve the concerns that many of us had, but we, it's important that in implementation, we continue to be vigilant about ensuring that safety issue of keeping bikers and hikers and equestrians separate.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Staff wants to add something to the record here for us.
Just very briefly, in building on what Councilmember Corian just mentioned, staff has prepared, per the direction of Plum Committee and Transportation Committee, we have come back with technical amendments that are before you today, addressing some of the issues that he has referenced. Those should be incorporated as part of your action today. And then the additional amendment, the motion that was mentioned, the Labonge-Reyes motion, would amend and actually supersede one of those proposed policies, Policy 3.3.5, which would supersede staff's proposed language. And just finally, I wanted to take the opportunity to thank and recognize the staff that has worked on this plan. You've heard from the general managers of our two departments and from the management teams of our departments, but those who have done the real work and the real heavy lifting are sitting at the table. Michelle Maury and her BikeWays program, Paul Meshkin and her staff at the BikeWays program at L.A. DOT, and from our Department of City Planning, Claire Bowen, who has worked on this plan over the last year, Jordan Turner, who has been on the project for the last three years, as well as Jane Choi, who has made invaluable contributions. They have been working with the bicycle community, and we thank the bicycle advocates for this partnership to move the plan forward to this point.
All right. No one else on the queue. Mr. Labonge has a request. Mr. Alex Baum. Mr. Alex Baum.
I call for the question on mountain bike.
No, call for the question on our bikes, on the bike plan.
On the bike plan. Call for the question on the bike plan.
The founder of bicycles, Alex Baum. Alex Baum has been on the Bicycle Advisory Committee since I was a child, because I was on there with you many years ago.
By the way, this is designed by the first member of the Bicycle Advisory Committee under Mayor Bradley.
That's it. Thank you. Thank you, Alex. Okay, the question's been called.
First of all, I want to thank the planning, DOT, and the terrific job they did on the plan. And I want to thank especially Michelle for the tremendous job they did for the last day. The other thing I want to bring up.
All right, thank you, Alex. And now we're going to take the vote, colleagues. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
All right, thank you. Forthwith, Alex, okay. If the request is forthwith. Thank you, Alex Baum. Next, tied on Mr. Clerk. All right, we'll do public comment now. Colleagues, public comment. Let's go to the San Fernando Valley. Augusto Bisani, San Fernando Valley, public comment. Augusto.
I'm right here, right here. My name is Augusto Bisani, and I'm a candidate for City Council, District 2, against my only opponent, Mr. Corian. I'm addressing the citizens of Los Angeles, and in particular, those on District 2. I am a first-generation and proud American citizen. For the last 33 years, I'm an Italian immigrant who has found the American dream. I'm not a community activist, but I live in the community, where I walk the streets of my neighborhood, and I see the same quality of life problems that you do. I live in the same house and in the community of Valley Village for the last 21 years. My children went to the same schools as your children. I drive the same street as you do, and I read the same newspapers as you do. I am definitely not a politician. My life, my family, and, and the community, like yours, are directly impacted by the consequences of their decisions. Yes, I do have an accent, and not being an activist or a career politician, it may appear that I do not have all the answers to the challenges facing the city of Los Angeles, but what I do bring to you is vastly more important. As a successful small-business owner in Los Angeles, I've experienced firsthand the challenges facing the city and small businesses every day. The business-as-usual politician will talk a good game, but in the end, the city is on the verge of going bankrupt. No matter how polished they appear and how they spin their accomplishment, they are the problem, not the solution. Their solution include cutting services, raising taxes, and shifting the burden onto the backs of you and your neighbors. This has not worked, and is wrong. If we are to resolve our challenges, then we need an approach that will increase the amount of money coming into the city. After all, it is about money. Money to provide the services we have the right to expect.
Thank you, sir. Donna Pearman. Donna Pearman. Donna Pearman.
Yeah, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Okay, anyway, I vote for Augusto Bisani for number two. I will vote for someone other than Antonio Cardeniz, who is on the CRA bandwagon, no other bondage use other than GNO. Our country is in imminent danger of terrorism. We have initiated, were initiated by gangs, and City Council tomorrow will take our right to protect ourselves. We already have enough gun laws. This is a way to destroy the Second Amendment right, little at a time, so you don't realize that that's happening, like boiling a frog, a little at a time, so he doesn't realize it happened. Our liberal politicians want to control our lives, what we eat, drink, how to protect, how we protect ourselves. Still, we owe, owe the wealthy, the movie, wealthy, and the wealthy and movie stars get to protect themselves. That won't stop that tomorrow, what's tomorrow. I'm against what is happening in Indiana and Wisconsin. Our politicians can send billions on pet projects in the CRA. Remember, the crook in Verdun was the mayor. They divert the crimes to look at the city, and they want to look at the city pensions, make city employees a villain. I hope you have a resolution against Wisconsin. Want to take away bargaining rights. No one looks at the highest-paid CIO, managers, and the politicians who make more than the retirement employees make, actively working. Politicians need to be able to work with unions, concessions for newest city employees. That's how it should be done. Put city employees already sacrificed, full loads, putting more in pensions, paying more for Medicare, co-pay. They're already paying Medicare. What do we want now from the city employees? Blood? We should be going after the city council, and we need to vote for these people out. If you don't like this, your city employee, I mean, a city council member in your district, you can get rid of them. Remember, March 8th, you can get rid of them if you wish. I know I'm going to try, I'm going to vote someone other than Cardeniz. Thank you.
Miriam Fogler.
Yeah, I'm not going to vote for Tony, because the fact is, he opened up the word revitalization at the Centennial. If we were not supposed to talk about it, he shouldn't have opened it up and brought it up. So, and his, he told me not to vote him anymore. I said, "That's it. Okay, I won't vote for you. That's it." Even though I signed his petition to get him on the ballot. So that's just the way it goes. I'm hoping Van Nuys, the Van Nuys Neighbor Council will allow the CRA to come into any more of its areas there. It's already gone into some pockets, but they can get him out. They can kick him out. So it's high time they take a hike out of the city. The $930 million is, you know, is not, is an outrage, and, you know, when I talk about the gun issue here now, the coming down, it's a bad issue now. I had family die in the Holocaust, Mr. Rosendahl and the company, and Mr. Coretts and Mr. Garcetti, and how can you allow to take away our rights, okay, as Americans, when we, we got terrorists who want to behead you, Nick Berg and Danny Pearl? How can you have the travesty to give in to Lothner? They regret after what they did. You know, the sheriff station didn't report him. After the community college reported him, it was unstable, he was in danger to society and others. He should have never been allowed to buy that gun. So now you can go on the bandwagon with McCarthy in Washington, D.C. How can you get away with that? 9/11, we lost 3,000 lives. How many more lives are we willing to sacrifice for the betterment of violence that you so-called that you save? That's worse, because what you're doing is, you're protecting the bad.
Rick Nightengale, followed by Bruce Darian in the San Fernando Valley.
Yeah, Rick Nightengale. I'll tell you, like I said before, everybody needs, this council needs to be replaced, because obviously, they're just not doing what they're supposed to be doing. And this person running for Bristol for the council, I think is a good idea to replace it. I'll tell you, we need it. Same as District 6 for Jamie Codora. I've met him, I like the way he talks. I'll tell you, today's the last day, you can do absentee ballots. I hope you people vote, you get out and vote. It's very, very important to vote, because that's the only way you're going to survive. Right now, the council keeps turning around and spending more money. You never see them come on here and say they're going to cut anything. They've had, they won't cut any, but you hear all these new projects coming up, and you see all these millions and million, $900 million in CRA, and they won't take one dime of it and put it in anything else. That's the only thing you can do, because they're not looking out for you. They got their own pet projects. Same thing as, look at that, DWP, they keep griping, that DWP, they're broke and they have to raise your rents. But no, they're going to turn around and give out $129 million a month to turn around to give to the city council. That is absolutely insane, and they think that they're entitled to it. And now look what they're doing about the guns. First, it was the ammunition that they lied about, about hollow points. Then they turn around and they take the clips. What's the difference of, one round, 10 rounds, 15 rounds? When one fires it, you're dead, or whatever. But it's about the gangs. Do you hear them about the gangs? This is where the whole problem is about the gangs. But they passed the laws, they don't care about laws, but to the regular people, we have to abide by them, because we don't, we, that's the way we were brought up.
Thank you very much, sir. Our next speaker is Richard Robinson. Is Richard Robinson here? All right, Mr. Robinson does not appear to be in the chamber. Is Phil Jennerjan here? You are our next speaker.
Hi. Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Phil Jennerjan. I'm a resident of the City Council. 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 My name is Phil Jennerjan. I was formerly a candidate for the city of Los Angeles back in 2009. I'm here today to discuss my opposition to many of you. Some of you have put your names on these ballot measures that are on the election coming up, and I'm here to explain to you why you're wrong. Charter Amendment L, the libraries. Now, I'd like to ask some of you, you know, when was the last time you guys stepped into a phone booth to make a phone call? You know, when was the last time you guys put pen to paper to physically write a letter to someone you're trying to communicate with? The fact is, the way that human beings exchange and share information is changing rapidly, and it's up to us to change with it. Now, unfortunately, libraries are probably not going to survive the transition to the digital age. Future generations are going to be able to carry around hundreds, maybe even thousands of books on a small, portable digital device, probably going to fit in their backpack, maybe even in their pocket. Why would these people want to go to a library? Now, instead of spending more on libraries, we need to be closing and consolidating them. I'm here to suggest that you close all the libraries except for the downtown branch, move all the books there, and start leasing out the closed library locations. I'm asking you to join me voting no on L. I'm also here to talk about no on I, the rape pair advocate. Now, when the DWP workers got caught on hidden camera drinking on a job and visiting strip clubs while on the clock, it was an embarrassment to the city, and it was a real slap in the face of taxpayers. Now, the reason why they got caught was not because we had a taxpayer advocate to keep an eye on them. No, the DWP has become a lawless and rogue organization because the corrupt leaders in this city refuse to discipline them. We have a lawless and rogue mayor who uses the pages of the Ethic Handbook like toilet papers. He runs around the city accepting hundreds of thousands of dollars in illegal gifts from companies that have business in front of the city. We have a lawless and rogue city councilman who is under indictment and refuses to step down. No, the problem is not rape pair advocates, it's poor leadership at the top. And if you want to hear more about voting no on all the measures, go to my blog, The Jennerjan Report. Thank you.
All right, Matthew Dowd.
I haven't started yet. Yes, thank you, Matt Dowd. I'm working on designing a new logo for the city of Los Angeles Attorney's Office right here. This would look great on the letterhead because that's how they treat the liberty in the country and in the city. And I can prove it. See, to all the bike people, first of all, don't believe a word, as Phil Lynott from Thin Lizzy was famously saying in that song. Don't believe a word if they say they're going to tweak the bike plan or they're going to make changes because my experience is they do nothing and they quote it in the paper and they trot out the police captains. "Oh, yeah, this is an ordinance that's going to tweak it and we'll make changes." But they never do, and they never did, and for two years they never did until I had to file a federal complaint. And here's what I don't understand, right? It's 2011. Wow, we're just getting a bike plan now? It's like, gee, 2010, we got a budget plan, I think, in the city. I mean, you had a no-brainer, the city was a no-brainer. Revenue, taxes, parking, all kind of income, and it was a no-brainer. Firemen, pensions, the whole thing. Gee, how do you blow a no-brainer? Let's go back to 2009 when I filed the complaint. Issue to summons to the city clerk, city attorney will understand this, it says you have to file an answer within twenty days. This was September 2009. Gee, the federal judge just released an order saying we can file a request for default. Because in all the bamboozlement, the city attorneys forgot to file the answer to our complaint, and here it is, I just, it was across the road, request for entry of default. Because the judge ordered it last week, yeah, we got a court order, default or an answer from the city. And we've been trying to, but they just came with nothing, they're not negotiating, they're just not doing anything, so let's go for the default option.
All right, Nina Royal. Is Nina Royal here?
Good afternoon. My name is Nina Royal, and I'm from Sanlito Hanga. In 2008, as the Vice President of Outreach and the Safety Chairman of the Sanlito Hanga Neighborhood Council, I spoke in front of the city council regarding sober living homes. My counsel at that time was in opposition to having unlicensed, unregulated, non-conditional use permits for sober living homes. Last week, or I should say, beginning of this week, on the Foothills Forum, which is a blog in the Foothills area, Mr. Paul Dumont, who is at present the Land Use Community Chair and a board member of the North Hills West Neighborhood Council, posted on the Foothills Forum this message. "Do you want to find a list of names, addresses, and phone numbers of people who want to push out of the neighborhood, want to push people out of the neighborhood just because you decided to stop drinking and using drugs? Follow this link to the public record of those who want this law to pass." It gives a link, and it says, "This small interest group of spiteful people think that they can push us all out of our homes with their connections, donations, and political support of our city council. They don't care where we go, they just want us out of their neighborhood. They believe we do not matter even though it is our neighborhood too. Use the council members' email links listed and let them know." Well, knowing that, they have the councilman's links to let you know. They have posted the speaker cards and the petitions with the residences and the phone numbers of everyone that is in support of the CUP. This is bullying. This should not be allowed. The state of California does not allow licensed plate numbers and...
The next speaker, thank you very much, ma'am.
Can I make, have you make a motion, please, to instruct the city clerk to redact personal residences and phone numbers of the public records to protect us?
Thank you very much. Mr. Kocorian, did you wish to speak?
Thank you, Madam President. If I might just respond briefly to Ms. Royal's concerns, which are very real and very legitimate when people use our public comment cards as an opportunity to retaliate against citizens for coming here and expressing their view, that is an outrageous abuse, in my view, of our public comment system. But I'd like to ask our city attorney to comment upon the public comment cards, what's required, what's not required, because I think that it's important for the public to understand that there is no requirement that any personal information be included in this public comment card in order to comment before us, if you would, please.
There's no requirement to place your name and address on a public comment card. There is a requirement to put some sort of identifying information on a card so that the council president knows who to call next. In some situations, in a quasi-judicial matter, there is a requirement to put some more information than the name so that the opposing side could know who to contact. In most legislative matters, such as ninety-nine percent of what goes on in council, there will be no requirement.
Thank you. Gene Murphy? Gene Murphy? Okay, Gene Murphy's no longer here. Oh, ma'am, Mr. Murphy? Okay, great.
It's Sean Murphy. It's okay, Madam President, I give you the benefit of the doubt. I attended a service at Our Lady of the Angels on Sunday, and it was wonderful. I pray for our new Archbishop of Los Angeles, I hope he does well. I hope, did any of the city council people go on Sunday? Also, I want to talk about the business in Hollywood. They should be reimbursed for what they lost last week due to the Academy Awards. I hope they're getting reimbursements. It should be, the Academy Award, I'm not putting the Academy Awards down, but I think it should be run better. I think the business, I think the people, the business on Hollywood Boulevard should get reimbursements or some kind of money, some kind of money. My brother will be running in the L.A. Marathon on Sunday, wish him luck. And Tom LeBange, I hope you win a third term. My brother said so too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mike Culker.
Yeah, Mr. Reyes, Councilman Reyes is still on the board, and I'd like to reserve my comments until he's back in the room. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. John Walsh? John Walsh?
The city attorney is exactly right. If I were a six-year-old Brazilian tourist who only spoke Portuguese, I could come here and speak before you. That is democracy, okay? You don't have to live anyplace, anything. Come to our website, we've put the endorsements up. Next week, on the eighth, next Tuesday, we're going to defeat Mr. Weezer, put in Rudy Martinez, defeat Mr. LeBange, and put in Stephen Box. And we're very upset how Mr. Weezer attacked Rudy Martinez for not speaking Spanish. I don't have to speak Gaelic, and Martinez doesn't have to speak Spanish. No one has to speak Spanish or any other language. We are language-free in America. Mr. Weezer sits there, and also, he attacks Martinez for being from Glendale. No one attacks you for being from Mexico, but you attack Martinez for being from far off Glendale. That's not American. You've got to understand us. You came here, we want you to be here.
Excuse me, stop the clock for a minute, Mr. Walsh, if you can make your comments to the body, and not any particular individual. Go ahead, start the clock.
...is out. Butner is leaving in two weeks, Eli Broad is pulling him because of the corruption is so bad over there that he doesn't want to be indicted. Redevelopment.com, and I want to say, what a great country this is. Someone gets up here and uses foul, anti-Mexican, illegal alien, no illegal alien, undocumented workers, and called them wetbacks, and was allowed to say it. But when I got up here and called the Speaker of the Assembly a liar, I was threatened with arrest. Because you're allowed to spew hate, 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 but political speech, calling him a liar, no. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you very much. Goodbye. Mr. Culker?
Hi, my name's Mike Culker. I'm elected member of the LNT side CRA PAC, and once again, I want to thank Mr. Reyes for his support with the CRA. The problem is not with Mr. Reyes or Mr. Weezer, Republicans are going to help us also, it's with the CRA. The bottom line is, as you guys know, I've talked to you before, we voted unanimously with unanimous community support to support the Governor Brown's proposal to eliminate CRAs. We've been retaliating against for the CRA, by the CRA, for the second month in a row. They've refused to call an executive committee meeting, which is supposed to be happening this coming week at the beginning of the week. They've refused to call an executive committee meeting, which stops us effectively from meeting in awe as a PAC board. It's all retaliation. The First Amendment of the Constitution's a wonderful thing, and so are the laws that create the CRA, and you folks that have created laws establishing our PAC. We need to stop bureaucrats like Mr. David Ricotello from stopping us from speaking our free speech and voting on matters to our district. Please help us, Mr. Reyes, please help us, Councilman Weezer. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. My name is Teresa Marquez, I'm from Boyle Heights, and I'm going to ask Mr. Councilman Reyes, Councilman Weezer, to please help us and get the CRA back to the meetings. They still have our money, even though we support Governor Brown to take that money, but they're still in control of our money, and they need to be there. And boycotting our meetings, maybe they need to be fired. Thank you.
Back to the San Fernando Valley, Van Nuys for Bruce Darian. Is Mr. Darian? Okay, there he is.
City Council, I don't know if you violated the Brown Act, but I would like to bring it up. It's more than three and a half hours since the meeting started. On this agenda, it says approval of the record of proceedings of the council meeting on February 23rd. First, the roll call, excuse me, then the salute to the flag, then moment of inspiration, then commendatory resolutions, introductions, and presentations, and then public testimony on non-agenda items within jurisdiction of the city council. So I would, at this point, like to admonish the city council for taking this three and a half hours after, at which point it would have been duly noticed on the council agenda to where we would have had the opportunity to speak, to which we did not. Now, that's just from the top here, and I'm going to look into it under the Brown Act to see if it's a violation and what recourse there is, if any. But what I came here to speak this afternoon, or was to be this morning, was the words that were spoken by the gentleman who accepted the Academy Award on Sunday for Best Documentary. I didn't see the documentary, I don't know the contents of the movie, I don't know the individual, I don't even remember the name of the documentary. I believe it was an inside job. But the words that he said were powerful, and I believe they were the most important for what was said at the entire Academy Awards, was that, after three years of the biggest financial scandal on Wall Street, which injured this nation, not one corporate executive has been put to jail. Now, that right there is the most important thing that was said that evening. And I would like to commend him for saying that, commend him for saying that at the Academy Awards. And I think that it's pertinent here, especially what's been said today with the issue of Vernon, which I am not up to speed on, I do not know the mechanics of it. But in listening to the Speaker of the Assembly say that it was replete with corruption, Vernon, it makes me realize what corruption there is in Malibu, and the vast wealth that is there, that really, maybe the city is just going for low-hanging fruit and trying to make an example here, when they really should be going to Malibu.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. All right, that marks the end of our public comment period. Mr. Clerk, what is our next item?
Item sixteen was called special for cards, and there is an amending motion that was circulated.
All right, we have two speakers on item sixteen, John Walsh and Matthew Dowd. Mr. Walsh, we have one minute left for today.
John Walsh, blogging in Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.org. Check out our endorsements for next week. You know, the first time I stepped on the Hollywood Walk of Fame was sixty-six. Okay, I lived there since seventy-six, about three or four hundred feet from the Hollywood Walk of Fame. This is a good plan. I read the whole thing, technically, but it's going to cost hundred, two hundred million dollars to do. You don't have any kind of money to do this. The historic trust should be raising money. The historic trust who picks who will be on the Hollywood Walk of Fame and who give themselves huge salaries, they're the invisible men. You never hear about the historic trust, the people who actually run, and it's a state-chartered organization. But you hire someone, they spent, got a lot of money to write a plan, you don't have a dime to implement it. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you very much. Mr. Matthew Dowd.
Yes, my favorite topic in the city of Los Angeles, of course, because it could really, it's one of the biggest attractions, if you do a survey down there at LAX, and that's what people come here for. So, and so I'm in favor of this because, I mean, who knows? I might get on there one day, Channel Thirty-five, I'm trying to get on the Hollywood Walk of Fame eventually. I'm proud of my television appearances and everything I fought for in the First Amendment of the United States. But I've got a couple of problems with, here's what we do have to fix. Let's cover up the Bruce Willis and Cameron Diaz, let's not renovate those because they're the illegal two already, they're the two that violated the Brown Act, if you want Brown Act violations. They're on tape, we already put them online, they're recorded forever, so if you're doing a Brown Act, anyone doing a Brown Act lawsuit, I'll be happy to submit those things. So, yeah, when I get my settlement from the city, I'm going to purchase a, try and purchase a star in Eric's district if I can, so he can always see it and always be reminded every time he goes down, they'll be like, "Oh, Matt Dowd, star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame." Wouldn't that just be unbelievable? Hey, you can stamp on it, jump up and down, whatever you like, but as long as you have the proper hearing, so it's not a Brown Act violation when it's approved. I just want my star approved, and so I'll keep the city council, you know, in mind to remember that when it comes up, which is not far away. Thank you.
No further cards. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Colleagues, this is just a brief thing, but I did want to call it special. It's true that Walk of Fame is probably the largest draw in the city of L.A. Hollywood remains the number one tourist destination in America, and everybody goes to see that Walk of Fame. I want to thank Mitch O'Farrell for my staff, all the folks who've been working on this from the historic trust, who don't draw a salary, who've raised, or close to four-point-two million dollars for the first round of repairs, but today, this is just about the standards to make sure that the five categories of stars, theater, radio, TV, film, and music, of which only Jean Autry has all five stars, as an aside, and all the great folks who are on the Walk of Fame can be protected for years to come, that we can have the sidewalk not only be good and repaired in the areas that it's cracked over time. We celebrated our fiftieth... We celebrated our 50th birthday this year. I've got to say, the Walk of Fame looks pretty decent for 50 years old, but like a lot of 50-year-old folks, we got to make sure that it kind of gets a reinvigoration of some youth back. And in looking at it, we have, you know, 50 years of history there. We're looking forward to another 50 years moving forward, but we've all voted on those stars over the years. I think there's only one I ever voted against, which was Rodney Dangerfield, but, you know, that was symbolic. And otherwise, we have seen, you know, stars from Latin America, like I remember when Luis Miguel got his star, and literally, there were hundreds of Mexican tourists that came just to be there, and the infusion of money that they spent in our economy was great. We're doing the same thing with some Asian stars in the future, and also, just whenever we see folks, I always say, right before Mr. Labonge and I sometimes speak of those ceremonies, how many folks are from out of town? And you see the hands shoot up. People visited, literally, to see those ceremonies, to walk the Walk of Fame. So your support today will go forward, and looking at those standards and preserving one of our greatest monuments here in the city of LA, the Hollywood Walk of Fame.
Mr. Labonge.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. It's an honor to serve with you and share in that. And what's great is when we do make those presentations, you ask those who are being honored, and they tell you their life experience when they first got here, how that meant something to them. And I want to also join in thanking Mitchell Farrell for the great job he does as your special deputy of all things in the district, and also, a little shout-out to the Board of Public Works that is working in conjunction with you and Cynthia Ruiz. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Now, open the roll, please. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Twelve eyes. Next item.
Item 17, called special for cards.
All right, we'll go to Van Nuys first, to Donna Pierman and Miriam Fogler. Oh, they're gone?
Oh, no, no, we're here.
Oh, Ms. Fogler. Okay. Van Nuys, Ms. Fogler.
Can she speak first?
Oh, Ms. Pierman, you're out of time, so we will be hearing from Ms. Fogler in Van Nuys.
You people are putting the city up in liability on this issue here, allowing tour guides to go before the LA River here. It's very dangerous, that you're, dangerous president that you're setting up. So I don't know why you don't take good care of making sure that the, that you should realize that you can get sued for all this stuff, having these tours along the river, and then you're going to use it, of course, revitalization, to fit part, to raise enough people to support it for redevelopment, which I'm against. We're all against the redevelopment now. CRA is going to use this LA River revitalization for their projects, some more waste and waste and abuse and corruption here in the city of LA. Watch out, Vernon. They're out to steal your money. Beware.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fogler. Matthew Dowd, back to City Hall.
Yes, thank you. Well, I completely disagree with Miriam Fogler. First of all, you know, they're letting them do something. Wow, that's amazing. I like that. It's a revocable right, so they can take it away. I mean, but who's going to sue a tour operator for taking a tour into the Los Angeles River? I mean, that's just nut talk. However, why would you want to go there? I mean, but hey, we don't even need to question that. I'm in favor of it. I'm going to, I'm going to look for an okay on this, because, you know, they're actually allowing some people to go down and have some fun, looks like, make a little bit of money, and run their business, and who cares? Just shut it down if it's raining, and, you know, that goes without saying, but this is a great thing. Let's all go down to the Los Angeles River on a big tourist expedition. I can't wait. I might head right down there after the meeting.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, it's been supported by the river community. We have many advocates who want to begin the implementation of the master plan. This is a first effort to clarify river access points. The city will provide a right-of-entry to pass through city infrastructure along the Royal Confluence and the Sixth Street Tunnel. This specifically is for educational tour operators. Vehicles will not be allowed. Operators must follow all city regulations and receive all other pertinent authorizations from the county and the Army Corps. And again, this is about implementation. We have the plan. We have folks who are entering. Now, we have to designate and identify those properties we own and allow for those types of approvals that they can get in and out of the river. So thank you very much. Ask for an eye vote.
Mr. Labonge.
For the CLA, if the CLA will contact LA Inc. and reach out to Duck Tours, whether it's in Boston or other cities with rivers, they have tours in old amphibious vehicles. Ask our LA Inc. if they could get that and have it start at the Pueblo at Mr. Weezer's district, and go over to the Sixth Street Bridge where Cha Cha started the race.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge. All right, open the roll on that item, please. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Twelve eyes. Thank you very much. Next item. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, 2:00, having arrived, and there is a committee meeting at 2:00. I'd just like to announce that the committee meeting will commence 10 minutes after the adjournment of council today. Information Technology.
I believe, thank you, Mr. Cardness. Thank you, Mr. Cardness. I think Mr. Reyes also has a meeting today, too. All right, next is item 18.
Called special for cards.
All right, is Miriam Fogler out of time? All right, Ms. Fogler's out of time for today. Mr. Dowd, one minute left. Wait, what was that?
Yes, hello. Check one, two. Like any good citizen, I'm budgeting correctly, including my time for the city council. Let me talk about this issue. I got kicked out of here last week because I would take $80,000 out of a community fund for weed abatement and graffiti removal in Dennis Zines district. Now, here's a good one. This is what you should be doing. Herb Wesson's getting it right. See, it's only $4,000, but it's for urgent pothole and street repair. Now, these are the really important things people need right now. Street repair, potholes, I mean, the amount of money that can cost a constituent with a front-end problem, you know, bushings and damages from all the potholes. Who cares about graffiti right now? It's all over the river, and they're taking tours down there. We should have tours all over the city, because that's what people want. So, and they want weed. So forget about the weed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dowd. That is the end of our comments for today, and if we can open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. If we could go to the next special, one and two. We have two special items before us.
Special one, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney, would you like to speak to the findings now?
Sure, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, it has been determined that the reallocation amount of Prop 40, Robert E. Zaberg-Harris funds, has changed. Immediate action is required, as today is the State Park's deadline for allocating these funds. Council must first make findings pursuant to Governor Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Sounds like a good code. Let's go ahead and open the roll on the findings. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Mr. Labonge, special one, and then we're on special two next. Mr. Labonge?
Yeah, just for technical on this, we got the state out. $9,552, four, $9,500, let me start all over. $952,438 is the correct amount. Members check, because there's a variety of things in Ms. Hans's district, as well as others' districts throughout.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next special item, I think Ms. Perry, special two, will speak to the findings. Ms. Perry?
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, did you need for me to make the findings?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, the reason that this is, I'm doing this on behalf of Mr. Parks. The mayor's grid office is requesting authority to contract with Community Build for Gang Prevention Services in the Florence Graham 77th Grid Zone. The reason that this is urgent is because there is negotiations between the mayor's office and Community Build to execute a contract in the amount of $332,000 for services for a period beginning March 1st, 2011, to June 30th, 2011. And it is, there's a, we don't want a gap in time, because the Los Angeles Metropolitan Church's contract was relinquished. So we don't want a lack of coverage, and that's the reason for the urgency.
All right, any other members on the findings? Now, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes, one no.
Okay. That is before us. Let's go ahead on the substance. Ms. Perry, would you like to say anything else on the substance? Are you okay?
So what are they going to come up with?
No, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right. That is approved.
Is that an electoral statement?
President, do you want to send both of the specials forth with?
Please, let's send both those forth with. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting a reform.
They are posted and referred.
And the desk is clear.
Okay. Any announcements, colleagues?
Quick, as we're following what's going on in Libya, I just hope that peace and calm and human rights come to the forefront. I appreciate the United States finally taking a position, supporting the people in that troubled country, and to all those folks, we wish them a democracy, and we don't want any more bloodshed over there.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge? If I can ask everybody, please rise for adjourning motions. If I could ask everybody in council chambers to please rise. Thank you. Colleagues, if you recall, when we used to take council meetings out to the districts, one of the first ones that we did was in the Kodak Theater in Hollywood, where we had a meeting. If you remember, a dear friend and constituent of mine did the Pledge of Allegiance, brave veteran who came here and also did it again a few years after that, somebody who was here in council chambers when we created a new neighborhood, bearing the name of his ethnicity in Temple Bodri area. And today, we mourn the passing of Faustino Pepin Baklig, who was a Filipino veteran of World War II. Colonel Baklig came here. We were honored when he did the Pledge of Allegiance for us a number of times, but he was a commander and founder of the Chair of Alian Sang Komunidad, Justice for Filipino-American Veterans, JFAV, the Association of Widows Advocates and Relatives for Equality, AWARE, Los Angeles, Golden Ager's Gala, Seniors for Pace, and the pillar of the Filipino World War II Veterans Movement in the United States. He passed away on February 27th, over this weekend, at 3:00 AM. He was 89 years old. Today, ironically, we introduced a motion, Mr. Weezer and I, for Filipino veterans to support Senate bill that would support ongoing claims for the benefits that so many Filipino veterans did not get, but one bill that did pass and become law. Pepin, who had a fast and a hunger strike for many years ago, was able to get through, and it is certainly his legacy. He was a nephew of the first Filipino West Point graduate, Colonel Eustacio Baklig, and he was born in Kubugao, Ilokosur, on February 14th, Valentine's Day of 1922. He was a high school teacher, a lawyer, a World War II veteran, and a survivor of the infamous Batan Death March. He was also the founder of the December 7th movement in 1993, JFAV, in '98, the charter founder of the International League of People's Struggle in the Netherlands in 2001, and a board member of People's Corps since 1993. He was also a neighborhood council member, one of the first council members in District 5 of the historic Filipino Town District of the Greater Echo Park Neighborhood Council in 2001, 2003, shortly after that system was implemented. His last public appearance and speech was at the annual Veterans Day rally in historic Filipino Town in November 11th, 2009. After his speech, he suffered a stroke, and he went on a long, lingering illness and convalescence to his home in different hospitals. He survived by his wife, Paquita, daughter, Preski, son, Omi Baklig, and a viewing will be held on Friday. March 4th at the Rose Hills Memorial Park and Mortuary Sky Rose Terrace from 1:30 to 8:30 PM, and the funeral service will take place in the Sky Rose Chapel at Rose Hills Memorial Park and Mortuary. We salute you and your service. May you rest in peace, Colonel Baklig. Mr. Kretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sad to adjourn today in memory of two Dodgers who are also Mets. Duke Snyder was one of the all-time Dodger greats and will forever be enshrined in the Baseball Hall of Fame in Cooperstown. He was born right here in LA in 1926 and was brought up in nearby Compton. As a rookie, he joined the Brooklyn Dodgers in 1947, and from that point until the Dodgers moved to Los Angeles, one question that was endlessly debated by New Yorkers was which local team had the most remarkable center fielder? Because the Giants had Willie Mays, the Yankees had Mickey Mantle, and the Dodgers had Snyder, and he was often underrated because of that. Even his first game where he hit well was overshadowed by the fact that his teammate, Jackie Robinson, broke the color barrier that same game. He was an extraordinary homerun hitter, a graceful runner, an incredible fielder with a powerful arm, and a great clutch hitter. For five straight years, he hit over 40 or more home runs, one of a handful of players to do that. The only player ever to hit four home runs in more than one World Series, including 1955, the year that the Dodgers finally won the World Series. It was Duke Snyder who hit the last homerun at famed Ebbets Field in Brooklyn before these Dodgers left for Los Angeles, and he was really the great link between Brooklyn and Los Angeles. He played five years in the Coliseum, although he was frustrated by the weird dimensions of the Coliseum, where they played before Dodger Stadium. He was later sold to the then-dreadful New York Mets before closing out his career with the San Francisco Giants. He retired at age 38, having played 18 seasons, batted 307 times, slugged over 400 home runs, and later managed in the minor leagues and broadcast for the Padres and Expos. And he survived by his wife, Beverly, two sons, Kevin and Kurt, two daughters, Pam and Donna, and leaving us at age 84, he leaves countless memories. And for those of us who loved baseball much as kids and/or now, those memories are as tangible and meaningful as the Duke Snyder memorabilia that I have here now at my desk.
Glad, Mr. Kretz.
I was really glad that you did that. Duke Snyder was just a great number four, and my brother, who of course was the first honorary bat boy for the Dodgers as a little boy. Duke Snyder was his favorite player, and we actually had a little miniature number-four Dodger uniform. That was my brother's, but when he was not around, there's a couple pictures of little Janice wearing number-four Dodger uniform as a toddler. So, and you'll have to ask my brother, if you guys ever see him, ask my brother about the time he finally got to meet his hero, Duke Snyder. It's a great story.
Mr. Labonge?
Yeah, I'd like to co-sign, ask at all members for Duke.
Sure.
When the Coliseum celebrated just recently the 50th anniversary of the Dodgers coming to Los Angeles, the game was played, and Duke was there, and it was very special to see him. What a nice recital, Mr. Kretz.
Mr. Kretz had a second one, then Mr. Labonge?
Yes. Another former Dodger and Met who passed away recently was Greg Gooseon, who passed away at age 65 at his Sherman Oaks home, where he was found just an hour before he was to be inducted into the Notre Dame High School Hall of Fame. It's important to note how much he meant to his school and to Sherman Oaks. He was always known as a witty and decent person and a character of true humanity and intelligence. Born December 14th, 1945, he starred in several sports at Notre Dame High School. A catcher, he was signed with the Los Angeles Dodgers for a then very significant bonus, but he was sent not that long after to the New York Mets. He played for a number of teams, including the Seattle Pilots, the Milwaukee Brewers, and the Washington Senators, and perhaps his most remarkable achievement was not only batting over 300, but having 10 home runs and just over 100 bats in 1969. He led an interesting life after baseball. He worked as a private detective for a while, and later helped his brothers, who were very involved in the boxing profession, and who worked with Michael Nunn, who was a middleweight champ in the 1980s, and if I'm pronouncing their name properly, the Ruelis Brothers, Gabriel and Rafael, who became featherweight and lightweight champions in the 1990s. Through boxing, he became friends with Gene Hackman, and later served as his stand-in in more than a dozen films, starting with the 1988 movie, Split Decisions. He also had parts in other movies such as The Royal Tannenbombs and Get Shorty. He is survived by his daughters Erin Hyder, Tracy Woodside, and Kimberly Gooseon, brothers Gordon, Pat, Dan, Mike, Larry, Joe, and Tom, and sisters Ellery and Sandra. And his funeral will take place at 6:00 PM, March 10th, at St. Francis, St. Francis de Salis Church, if I'm pronouncing that right, 13360 de Salis, 13360 Valley Heart Drive in Sherman Oaks.
And Mr. Zain on this one?
The Gooseon family, and their dad was a police officer. I think they have seven sons and ten gooseboxing. Wonderful family, and I- And I heard that this morning on the news, the sports report, that he had passed away. They had a big event this past weekend at Notre Dame High School, and as you mentioned, he was going to be installed as one of the heroes. Just an incredibly wonderful family, the Goosen family. But their dad was an LA police officer and had a number of sons, and all did extremely well, and it's very sad, his loss. So I join you on that adjourning motion. Mr. Corretts, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
Garcetti, I'd like you to adjourn on this. Jane Russell.
Yeah.
Jane Russell, who was a tremendous actress, what a striking face. The movie Outlaw, which changed the dynamics of film. Wonderful, wonderful person. Met her with Johnny Grant years ago, and we were in Hollywood Boulevard. It was windy, and I was presenting one of those great city seal signs, and the wind almost clipped her, but God was watching me, because it didn't. And Jane Russell truly was a saint. I ask that we adjourn in her memory. She survived by her three children, six grandchildren, and 10 great-grandchildren. Jane Russell. And also members, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Ollie Matson, Olympian, member of the Los Angeles Rams, Pro Football Hall of Fame. When he came to the Rams, nine players were traded by the Rams to get Ollie to play for the Rams. After his retirement, he was involved with our youth in Los Angeles. He was a friend of John Falls, as well as many as well. Ask for adjourned memory of Ollie Matson.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, I have one that is from Bernard Parks and Jan Perry, and then I have one from my district, and this is about Joseph Dyer. I'd like to request the council to adjourn in memory of Joseph Dyer, who died of heart failure February 24th, 2011, at Good Samaritan Hospital at the age of 76. Dyer was a retired KCBS TV executive, who was one of the first African-American reporters hired by a major network television station in Los Angeles, and later helped to set a standard for community involvement. Dyer was hired by KNXTV, which later became KCBS, as a writer and news producer. In 1965, a few months after the Watts riots erupted, he was one of the few African-American reporters to cover the unrest. In 1968, he was promoted to Director of Community Affairs, a position he used to promote ethnic and racial diversity within the station, and strengthen dialogue with outside groups that often were critical of his policies and coverage. During his 30 years at the station, Dyer also hosted a weekend public affairs program and wrote editorials, which he delivered on the air. Dyer was born September 24th, as I mentioned, 1934, on a sharecropper's plantation in Gilbert, Louisiana. When he was nine, his father died, and he went to work picking cotton to help support his siblings and his mother, who was deaf. Dyer was interested in drama, but went to the New Orleans Xavier University on a football scholarship. After a year, he transferred to Louisiana's Grambling State University, where he earned a bachelor's degree in speech and drama in 1957. He served in the Air Force until 1961, editing the Grand Forks Air Force Base newspaper, and hosted the North Dakota-based television broadcast. After his honorable discharge, he settled in Los Angeles, worked briefly as a technical writer at the Jet Propulsion Laboratory in Locktonada-Frentwich, before moving to KNXTV. Funeral services are pending. He survived by his wife Doris, daughters Karen, Monica, Kim, a son, Joe III, and a host of families and friends. May he rest in peace. And I'd like to also adjourn in memory of Marjorie Zipperblatt, who's a local activist and Pacific Palisades Democratic Club board member. She died peacefully of natural causes in her Santa Monica home on Tuesday, February 22nd, just five days after her 90th birthday. Marjorie was born on February 17th, 1921, and grew up in Manhattan. Her father was a doctor who had a private practice. She attended NYU. In 1947, she married Michael Zipperblatt, who had served in World War II in the Army Air Corps. They met on a float in the middle of a lake at a local country club. Soon after, the newlyweds moved to Los Angeles, where Marge worked as a buyer for the children's department store for I Magnum &amp; Company. She left that position when she gave birth to her daughter Ellen in 1953. The Zipperblatts moved to the Palisades in 1968. Marge immediately got involved with Pacific Palisades Democratic Club, where she served as a board member up until her death. She worked daily at the club's Democratic headquarters on 9th and Wilshire during the 2004 and 2008 elections. Marge was honored by the club as Democrat of the Year in 2004. Marge served as a role model and activist for democratic values throughout her life, and was an inspiration to all who knew her. She was admired for her very strong moral compass and was a very compassionate person. She was passionate about social justice, fairness, creating a community, and caring for all. She was an active volunteer and champion causes involving peace, health care, civil liberties, and homelessness, all of which she referred to as economic justice. Marge was a founding member of the West Side Shelter and Hunger Coalition, and was active in soliciting donations to the West Side Food Bank and the Ocean Park Community Center. Friends of the community center recall her as a tireless worker, whether it was for political campaign, church effort, or for the homeless coalition. She always attended meetings and was engaged, even when her health was not good. Her activism began with the Civil Rights Movement. Marge worked as a local effort to provide fair housing and prevent segregation. As a peace activist, she became involved since the early days with Another Mother for Peace, founded in 1967 by a group of women strongly opposed to the war in Vietnam. She was also an active member in the 80s of the Centurion Movement to aid South America and Central American refugees, the California Farm Worker Strike, and a number of local library and school bonds, and worked on the effort to establish the Didi Hurst Community Mental Health Center, one of the first in Southern California to offer a sliding pay scale for mental health services. She was active in health care for all California, dedicated to enabling universal health care through single-payer financing. Marge was born into a Jewish faith, but became a Unitarian. She was an active member of the Unitarian Universalist Community Church in Santa Monica for over 50 years. She survived by her daughter Ellen Stewart, 57, of Santa Monica. May she rest in peace.
Thank you. Any other adjourning motions? If not, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll, and it'll next be in session.